Accessor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting to Order. We're going to start by being led in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight by the San Carlos Lions Club.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unnationed, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have to say I also like the salute element there. Not too many people do that. So, do we have any changes to the order of the agenda either from staff or from the dais?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Chair.
Anything from the dais? Alright, then we'll move on to report from closed session. Greg, your timing is impeccable. Greg, do we have anything to report from closed session? Thank you, Greg. We'll move on then to presentations. First presentation is also from the Lions Club. We're going to get a little update on what you guys mean to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you Mayor Mark and City Council members. I'm Venetia Young, current president of the San Carlos Lions Club. And Crystal had asked me on an email, did I want to do a PowerPoint? And I thought, no, I'm only going to speak a couple minutes. So, I hope you will oblige me here, and I tend to talk fast. San Carlos Lions Club is not new to many of you here. City Council Laura was just a judge for our Student Speakers Contest. Thank you again for that. Mayor Mark is an active participant of our TRITIB, and he also supports and sponsors a table every year for our TRITIB. But I just wanted to give you a little bit about San Carlos and the things that we do to affect the city. We have been, we are celebrating our 81st year as San Carlos Lions Clubs. Lions Club International is only 101 years. So, as you can see, the city of good living jumped on the bandwagon early. We are the largest service organization in the world with 1.6 million participants or members. And I think right now, the biggest countries that are growing are in Asia, China, and also India. And we're honored this year to have our first female international president, and she is from Iceland. And so, after 100 and years, we have a female president, so we're very happy. When I first joined San Carlos, we were like less than 50% female. And since then, I'd like to say that we've had a 25% growth in the last five years. We're going to be inducting three new members this week on Thursday night, and we have approximately 62 members now. And as you know, you know many of the people here that have participated, even a former mayor of San Carlos who couldn't make it tonight. A couple of things that maybe you don't know is that San Carlos Lions Club actually helped build the San Carlos Museum. And there's a plaque in there, and if I'm wrong, caught, please. We built it. Okay, so we built it. And if you go in there today, you'll see a rusty plaque that we've already put monies that we're going to clean it up and make it brand new. The other thing that you may not know is that on an annual basis, we ask the city, what areas in the city needs a new American flag? And the San Carlos Lions Club provides those flags and make sure that they get up so that we are honoring our country. The other things we do, and I think you probably know, is we've been very involved in keeping the ball and always have had a San Carlos skit. We've already begun writing the skit already for next April. So, we've already had our first meeting, and we're having another one soon. Just a couple other things. We are one of the largest donors to the Caring Cover Program. We have several people that have been on the board, Lauren and Sam. And this year, we were able to, we did a bowling, co-hosted a bowling Strikeout Hunger. And we were able to present a check to Caring Cover for $1,300 and 300 pounds of food. And I'm also proud to say that last month, we were able to give our largest contribution to Healthy Cities Tutoring. And so, we were able to present Karen Molinari with a nice check that we haven't been able to do before. I can go on and on, but I'm not going to. We do over 70 service projects a year, just our club, our 16-something of us. And we are going to have a scholarship contest, which the deadline was already in. We're going to give up to five scholarships this year to a high school senior deserving of it who resides in San Carlos. We just had our Student Speaker, Mayor Mark. We'd love for you to be a judge at our final event on May 11th. We'll let you know. And this Saturday, we are having our 80th or 79th Easter Egg Hunt that the San Carlos Lions put on. So, after the breakfast at the Adult Community Center, will be set up at 12:30 for children 3 to 8 years old. We ask them to bring their basket. We usually get several hundred. And the Easter bunnies all set, and all our Easter eggs are ready to give out. So, I think that's it. I just hope that you had a little idea. Oh, one other thing is...
Ice creaming?
Oh, ice, that's what I was just going to talk about. So, Helen Keller was instrumental in making the Lions Club what it is today. There was a group of businessmen 101 years ago who used to meet in Chicago every week for lunch. And they wanted to know what they could do to serve. And so, Helen Keller went to one of their meetings, and she challenged them to be the Knights of the Blind. So, one of the main things that the Lions Club International focuses on is eyesight. Our club, we help provide eyeglasses for low-income families who cannot afford them. In the last two years, we were able to work with the San Carlos School District nurses. We have the state-of-the-art machine that's worth about $10,000. And we were able to, or the nurses were able to screen all the students at Tierra Linda Middle School in three weeks where it normally took three months. So, over the last two years, we have screened over 5,000 students already. So, those are the things that we're really proud of. And we just donated, how many pounds of eyeglasses?
152.
152 pounds of eyeglasses. So, if you go around and see the library and different schools, you'll see a box. If anybody has eyeglasses to donate, we do repurpose them for people in other countries. So, I want to thank you again for the opportunity, and I hope I didn't speak too long. Thank you.
Venetia, you did not speak too long. Thank you very much. And by the way, you didn't need the PowerPoint. That was great. Thank you. All right. In fact, I forgot to ask, are there any questions for Venetia from my colleagues? Okay. All right. The next item is, we have a presentation from Hip Housing on the work and services that it provides.
Good evening, Mayor Albert, and members of the council and city staff. I'm Laura Finuke from Hip Housing. We do have a PowerPoint presentation tonight. We may speak a little bit longer, but it's important work that we're doing, and we are so excited to have the opportunity.
The only council member who actually objected to PowerPoints no longer serves on the council, so you're fine.
I have with me here tonight Kate Comfort-Har, Executive Director. We do have a PowerPoint presentation for you this evening, and then hope to answer any questions that you have about our presentation. By way of introduction, Hip Housing is a nonprofit organization. We've been in the community now since 1972. Our mission is to invest in human potential by improving the housing and lives of people in our community. And we do that by offering creative affordable housing solutions here in San Mateo County. We're very pleased to report that in the given year, we provide housing to over 1,400 individuals here in San Mateo County. About 100 adults and children in our Self-Sufficiency Program for Families with Children. We have over 650 tenants living in the over 400 units that Hip Housing owns and manages in the county. And we have about 650 people who are in home sharing matches here in our community. And in addition to that, we also field about 3,500 calls from the community every year who have questions about housing services and resources in our community. Our partnership with the city of San Carlos really began in the early 90s when, soon after we finished construction of two six-bedroom, three-bath homes in Redwood City for our Self-Sufficiency Program for Families with Children, a parcel of land became available on Cedar Street here in San Carlos. And with the city's support and the county's support and Hip Housing's support, we were able to purchase the land. And we constructed our third group-share property, which is a six-bedroom, three-bath home affectionately known as Robin's Nest. And this is a home to usually two to three low-income, single-parent families who are working towards career and educational goals. The families can stay in the home for up to two years. And the housing support and the support for the case management for the families comes from the San Mateo County Department of Housing. Hip Housing's Self-Sufficiency Program is a model welfare-to-work program that enables single-parent and two-parent families to have housing support and coaching support while the families work towards economic self-sufficiency. We usually work with about 50 to 60 families in this program every year. And we currently have five families in San Carlos who are participating. All of the families are doing school and education, but they need support not only with their housing, but with taking a look at their financial well-being, and also to help increase their savings, their income, reduce their debt, increase their credit score, and to provide a holistic approach to looking at the family's needs. Our staff is currently being trained in trauma exposure because a lot of, huge percentage of our families, usually 60 to 70%, have experienced trauma in their lives, also domestic violence. And so, we want to take a very holistic approach with them to make sure that they're provided with as many resources and support as needed. The families also attend monthly life skills workshops where they have presentations on financial literacy, coaching support, resume writing. This past weekend, we had an organization called Move Up come and work with the families on how to establish a LinkedIn profile so they have more access to job opportunities. There's three housing support models for our Self-Sufficiency Program. We have about 11 families that are living in four of our group-share properties. The two in Redwood City, the one in San Carlos, and we have a fourth property in Menlo Park. And then, we have some families who are living independently in their own unit or a unit owned and managed by Hip Housing, or a unit that's managed by one of our partnering nonprofit affordable housing developers. And Hip Housing helps to provide the housing scholarship for these families for a year to five years. We also have some families who are on the county's Moving to Work Section 8 subsidy program, so they have housing support for five years, and they pay roughly 30% of their income on rent. So, the families in San Carlos that we have currently in the program are working on their bachelor's in criminal justice, accounting, nursing, computer science, and psychology. So, our program really provides a lot of resources and support to move the families into economic self-sufficiency. And we also take a very housing-first approach. So, as soon as the families enter into our program, we're helping to develop a housing plan for them so that they have permanent affordable housing after they finish and complete our program. So, now I will invite Kate up, and she's going to talk a little bit about our properties. I'm just that much taller. So, most people know it's by our social service programs, but we also do property development. So, our relationship with the city of San Carlos has been long and strong. In 1994, we purchased the Cedar House for Families, as Laura was talking about. And we used a really collaborative financing structure for that that included a Hip Housing donor. Then, the county came in with a little bit, but we also partnered with what was then the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency in order to acquire this property. We followed that with the acquisition of Cherry Street. Let's see. Get this right here. Yes, I guess I was already there. Okay, so yeah, so Cherry Street. We purchased Cherry in 1995. It is a six-unit apartment building. All of the units are BMR, deed-restricted, and they're deed-restricted until 2020. That was a 15-year deed restriction. Again, it was financed in a similar way that we did the Cedar Street House in that it was a collaboration between ourselves, the county, and the Redevelopment Agency of San Carlos. We also do some property management, or did some property management here in the city of San Carlos. We, for a while, several years, were the property managers for 657 and 817 Walnut. In total, you know, like I said, we started with Share House in 1989 for our property development side. We now own 17 properties throughout San Mateo County in six different cities. All of them are below-market rate units, meaning that they are affordable rents as set by HUD. Eight have Section 8 contracts of one kind or another. There are several different kinds of contracts. But the rest are not supported by ongoing Section 8 contracts at all. One of the really great things about our property development side and what kind of makes us unique in the world of nonprofits is that on the property side, we're actually able to make a little bit of extra income. And we use that income then to feed right back into our program side so that we're less dependent on grants. In addition to property development, we also do property management. We, between the amount, between the properties that we own and the third-party contracts that we do property management for, we are working with 26 different properties, 403 units managed in total. We are in AMO, which is an accredited management organization, one of only 500 in the country. We are also on the property development side at Chodo, which is a community housing development organization. So, we're entitled to special funding in order to be able to acquire and preserve affordable housing. We have a team of 14, and our most recent addition is a compliance program. So, with the Palmer decision finally being put to bed, cities are now again able to require that new developments provide a set aside for affordable housing, right? So, it might be 10 units in a new development or 15 units that have to remain affordable. But market-rate developers typically don't know anything about affordable housing. They don't know what the rent should be. They don't know what the incomes of the tenants should be, how to annually recertify those incomes, how to report back to cities, how to maintain a waitlist of appropriate income folks. So, we are partnering with commercial developers, or not commercial, but market-rate developers to provide that service, to be able to do the compliance component for them. So, for a small fee, we'll come in, five units here, six units there, to be able to make sure that those units stay in compliance. We currently have 26 units in our compliance program. We plan to launch it in earnest. Right now, it's in sort of a pilot stage, but we plan to launch it in earnest at our luncheon, and where you have, I think, a little postcard about our luncheon that's coming up in June. But we hope to really encourage cities to encourage their developers to work with a specialist in affordable housing to make sure that the integrity of those inclusionary units stays intact. So, with that, like I said, most people know it's by our social service program, and that flagship program for us is home sharing. And I'm going to bring Laura back, who has been doing our home sharing program for 26 years. She is the local expert on home sharing. We actually hosted a national conference for home sharing in October where we brought over 40 different programs from around the country here to San Mateo County to learn more about how important home sharing is and how it works best and how to really explore some best practices. So, I think Laura's going to share some of those with you tonight. Thank you. Okay, so as Kate mentioned, our home sharing program is really our most visible program here at Hip Housing. And we're very appreciative of the funding support that we've been getting from the city since probably the early 90s, you know, for this particular program, which matches a homeowner or renter who has extra space available in their home with a home seeker who currently lives, works, or attends school here in San Mateo County. We interview about 1,600 people a year for this program. And as I mentioned earlier, we have about 650 people who are in home sharing matches in a given year. And here in San Carlos, we interview and screen almost 70 people for the program. And we currently have about 15 residents who are participating in home sharing matches. We're in all of the jurisdictions' housing element as a way to provide affordable housing through this particular home sharing program. And as Kate mentioned, we're also part of a larger National Shared Housing Resource Center network, which enables us to do a lot of technical assistance to other organizations that are interested in starting programs in their communities. So, what home sharing is not for our program is a short-term rental opportunity. Most of our home sharing matches, on average, are last three years or longer. And we have some matches here in San Carlos, two matches. One involving a senior and one involving a single parent in a household. They both have been going on for the last four years. So, it's really more of a permanent housing solution for many people in our community. It turns, home sharing turns existing housing into current affordable housing. And most of our home providers have one room available, or sometimes they have a separate little unit available on their properties. So, we help to provide tenants for those types of ADU opportunities as well. And then, we facilitate a rent exchange where the home seeker moves in and pays a portion of the rent and portion of the utilities. And then, there's some matches that involve a reduced rent exchange, usually with a senior home provider who needs a little extra support in the home with help with basic household chores for a lower rent. We personally screen everybody for the program, and we do that in four offices. We have an office in Daly City Community Center, the South San Francisco Senior Center, our main office in San Mateo, and then also at the Fair Oaks Community Center. And we do home visits with all of our home providers as well, so we get to see the space and do a safety check of the home. We also require clients to provide us with proof of ID, proof of income, three-character references, and we do a background search as part of our screening. We hear from San Carlos residents that the reasons oftentimes that they are looking for new housing is because they're living in a situation where a landlord might be remodeling the unit and raising the rent, or the landlord may need the room back for a family member who cannot find housing, or they might be living in an overcrowded situation. And also, residents are being concerned about their commute to work and want to live closer to their place of business. Home sharing is also seen as a solution to provide workforce housing. We work with many individuals that are in the healthcare field, in the education field. Here in San Carlos, we see clients who work for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, for the San Carlos School District, for the city of San Carlos itself, and through businesses like such as TJ Maxx, Town Restaurant, Union Bank, Vocational Rehab. So, we're often seeing a lot of employees who are also in need of housing. Clients are able to interview and screen each other and make their own decision about a housemate, and we provide them with a comprehensive resource packet so they know what questions to go over with clients when they're first interviewing them over the phone and when they're interviewing them in person. We often also help clients fill out a living-together agreement, so we put everything in writing for the share aspect, as well as to discuss what the rent is or the share of exchange will be for the arrangement. And for all of our matches, we do follow-up support for the duration of the time that the clients are matched together. We actually have a volunteer who's a resident here of San Carlos who comes every other week, and she makes phone calls to all of our matches involving seniors. So, we're very proactive in keeping touch with all of our home sharing matches. So, home sharing not only benefits individuals, but it benefits our community. It keeps housing costs low for both the home provider and home seeker. We usually see that home providers are spending about 50% of their income on housing costs before they have a housemate move in. And for our home seekers, we're seeing a trend that they are already using home sharing as their way to keep their housing costs affordable. So, by doing that, they are keeping their housing costs at or below 30% of their income. Over 50% of our home providers are seniors, so home sharing allows them to remain independent in their home and age and place. It also provides, allows for our workforce to stay local and allows employers to recruit and retain their employees. It turns existing housing into a new affordable housing opportunity. We don't have to build it. It already exists. And it's especially important when we have long waiting lists for our subsidized housing or sometimes often closed waiting lists. Home sharing becomes an immediate solution for people looking for affordable housing. Our new marketing slogan is really "One Spare Room Can Change Two Lives." We know that the home sharing program not only impacts the life of our home provider, but it also impacts the life of our seeker, which leads into our marketing campaign. We're very fortunate to have received some funding from the county's Measure K Initiative to do some larger-scale marketing activities. And here in the South County, you may have seen some of our bus ads on the Samtrans bus. We also have an electronic billboard that goes up periodically between Holly and Whipple on Highway 101. And we have some... And we have some shopping cart ads at the Safeway in Redwood City. Here locally, we do downtown flyering to the local businesses to distribute information about our program. We also partner with the San Carlos Adult Community Center and with the Sequoia Village, and we post online on nextdoor.com. Lastly, I wanted to mention, as I mentioned earlier, that we do field about 3,500 calls from people in the community who are inquiring about housing resources. There really isn't one central location where people can call and find out about what is affordable housing, what is below-market housing, what is subsidized housing, what are some of the opportunities that are available. And so we very proactively want to answer all those calls and all those questions because we know that people in our community are very stressed with their housing situation, and we want to provide a voice for how to help them address their housing needs. So we fielded all of those calls over the year, and we take in about 70 calls from San Carlos residents. So I wanted to end just with a quote from one of our home providers in San Carlos. The client who has been in a home sharing match says, "After my spouse passed away, I felt very vulnerable living alone. HIP vetted housemates for me and has experience navigating the particulars of home sharing. Being matched with a housemate gives me company, safety, and income. Living with my housemate is comfortable and pleasant. We compromise and we cooperate." So I just want to say thank you again for the opportunity to present information to you about our organization and programs, and Kate and I are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Laura and Kate. That was a great presentation. Question, Sarah.
Thank you, Mark. I just had a quick question about one of the properties, 1244 Cherry Street, that I see is deed restricted until 2020, and seeing that that's next year, I'm wondering what the plan is.
So our intention is to keep that property as affordable. We're hoping that maybe there might be an opportunity to do other things with that property as well, given some of the situations that we have with affordable. We'd love to be able to turn that into more units at some point if we could do some sort of a redevelopment on it. But right now, the purpose that we have as a mission for our organization is to always keep our housing affordable. So our plan is to keep it that, but it will no longer have a deed restriction. And that's just that extra layer of security when you have a deed restriction.
Other questions? Laura.
Wait, which Laura? That Laura, that Laura.
Sorry, I was referring to our Laura, but she may have a question for your Laura.
Thank you. That was a really interesting presentation, and thank you for doing that work. It's really impressive. When it comes to affordable housing, you know, one of the things that I've learned lately is that there's different levels of affordable housing. How do you tackle the different income levels and what are some of the strategies that you employ to address a range of demographics?
Well, in terms of finding income-qualified folks, they definitely find us. So we have a waitlist of about 2,000 people on our waitlist, plus we have an interest list, so people can sign up for that. They can self-identify upfront what their income level is and then how many people are in the household. So it's a combination of knowing how many people in the household and what their income level is to determine where they land at. So in order to be considered affordable by HUD standards, you have to be at 80% or less of the area median income. So that's affordable, but most affordable housing falls at about 60% of AMI, and then it goes down to 50 and 30. At very low is 30. 50 is also considered very, or I guess 30 is extremely low, 50 is very low, 60 is low, and 80 and above is no longer considered low income for housing purposes. So we keep a very close track of the HUD standards because it's all determined by HUD, and we check that every year. So every year, we have to income-qualify all of our tenants, so they know that that's part of the affordable housing gig. You got to recertify every year. And it's, you know, a lot of private information that has to be shared, so we need documentation of their income, and often that's a tax return, it can be pay stubs, but we need a variety of tools to make sure that that income is what they're claiming.
And just a quick follow-up question. Do you aim to allow housing opportunities for all of the strata of income?
Yes, yes. So, you know, it's required by deed typically when you partner with the city or a county to do financing, that they tell you exactly how many units you have to have in any complex at any given level, and it's almost universal. You're going to have a variety. You'll have some at 50, some at 60, some at 80, and typically never over 80. But you know, it's the over-80 population is of concern now too, right? Because we're talking about, you know, well-educated typically working folks. It could be a teacher, a teacher's aide, it could be, you know, a nurse's aide, folks we need in our community too. And this new inclusionary program that we're launching, it turns out that a lot of the units that are restricted by cities can fall into about 120% of AMI, and that's going to cover your teachers and your nurses and some of those folks. So by doing the compliance work for inclusionary, we're also able to work with that missing middle. So it's a whole package, right, of trying to create a mix of people on our waitlist by doing appropriate outreach and making sure that we're making our programs and properties known to local communities. So we do a lot of outreach. I mean, Laura alone distributes a flyer once a month to 3,000 different, literally 3,000 different entities for about home sharing. If we've got available units, we let those go onto that list as well. So we're working with school districts and hospital districts in addition to, you know, that distribution list, so.
Ron.
Thank you, Mark. I don't have really any questions, but I did want to thank you both for a great presentation. As you know, HIP Housing is near and dear to my heart. I was on the board 25 years ago. I don't even want to think about that, how long that's been, but this organization has really grown during that time, has amazing stability. Laura, I think you've been there since I was on the board, and I forgot the name of the gal that answers the phone, but she's, Sue's been there for
18 years or
A long time, since, again, since I, I think since I left the board. But I don't think people realize what a valuable service HIP Housing is and what you do for the community, and I just want to express how appreciative I am that you're a part of it.
Thank you very much. And we're really proud of the fact that our staff, the average tenure is about 10 years, and that's fairly unusual. That's true of our property management staff too. They typically turn over every 12 to 18 months in affordable housing. We've had ours for four years. So we're really super happy about that institutional knowledge that that staff can bring. And you might think, oh, you know, they've been working there a long time, they're just resting on their laurels. They're not. Our staff is passionate about what they do, and they're such experts. It's really fun to work with them.
It's a great group, very empathetic, and I get one of your flyers every month, Laura. Thank you.
Ron, I was going to say that it may have been a long time, but at least you still remember it, so it couldn't have been too long.
Yeah.
I had a couple of questions, some of which, and a comment for you folks, and then some may actually be between you and Jeff. The observation is, my own sort of self-education and learning about the housing challenges that are affecting all of us in the Bay Area, one of the terms that I've come across recently is to look to replace the term affordable housing with essential housing. And for me, it resonated very strongly because affordable housing tends to, in its nature, talking about what people can pay. Essential, to me, is a good reminder of how, I don't know about anybody else, but I don't really want to live in a community where the only people are there are a bunch of childless, rich, old people. Okay? I mean, I like having plumbers and electricians and teachers and baristas and waiters and have an opportunity for all walks of life to live as part of a community, because to me, that's what a community is. So I just mentioned that in passing, that's something that you guys may want to think Specific question I did have, though, is do you, how much money annually roughly does the city of San Carlos provide to you in terms of support?
$20,000.
$20,000, okay. Jeff, are there, would the funds that are in the BMR housing fund, which are restricted in terms of how they can be used, are they potentially eligible for supporting entities like HIP Housing? Or is that considered not a valid use under law?
Potentially, they are. The housing money that we receive comes from a lot of different sources, so some of it has specific earmarks and others would be available for programs like this.
There might be some there. Because I, just in passing, one of the things that I find attractive and always have about what HIP Housing does is it's, you guys have a more nuanced approach of not just trying to solve or impact the issue by building stuff. It's also other types of programs too, and there's nothing wrong with building, and building is in fact the gold standard in terms of providing housing, but you can benefit a lot of people a lot more quickly by doing things other than building, because building takes time. And in the current market, it takes a lot of time. So, and I guess the last question is, the types of services that HIP Housing makes available, do we have that information, Jeff, for residents on like the website? Do we mention it occasionally or maybe once a year in the newsletters or what?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm embarrassed to admit that I get my copy of that and I never read it because I figure I, you know, I've read it all the way, but obviously I didn't. Okay. So we do make that available. Okay, good.
So Laura is a San Carlos resident, so she makes sure that there's flyers in the library, in the city hall, that we're present everywhere.
Okay, good. Well, thank you both, Kate and Laura, that's great. Any other questions from the dais? Seeing none, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, good. I was going to say, before we move on, I was going to mention to folks who wish to step out, that's fine. We like having people stay for the entire meeting, but we understand that you have lives to live and won't necessarily be here for the whole time. Thank you. All right, so next up is public comment. This is for items generally that are not on the agenda. We provide separate time for public comment on items that are on the agenda, and I don't normally phrase it that way, but I did this time because I'm about to ask Greg a question. I have a request from a speaker who would like to address the council but whose timing is such that they need to go to work and won't be around for when the item actually comes up. Is it okay to have them speak now?
Well, I mean, it's your discretion whether to allow that, but it might not be in the record in the right place in our minutes, but we can make a note of that.
Okay. Well, let me start then by Sandy Alt House. If you would like to speak now, you're welcome to, or, and then followed by Josh Wallace.
Hi, I'm Sandy Alt House. I'm Levon Magnolia Avenue, and it's very difficult to follow up HIP Housing with talking about SB 50. I am not going to get into the bones of what SB 50 is. My main question to you is, why isn't the city doing more to educate the residents of what this is? I've talked to neighbors over two blocks and nobody, not one, knew anything about SB 50. So I think not only should there be notification from the city about what's going to happen, that the state could take over local zoning and make it statewide, and also that, sorry, I'm having a blank out moment here, just to let them know where the city stands, because I don't know where the city stands on this issue. I've talked to some of you, but not to all of you, and I don't know if it's a cohesive thought, and also there are cities up and down the peninsula, as well as all over the state, that have taken a stand, whether for or against SB 50. But I think everybody who is not only in the strike zone of a half a mile of the train station, but everywhere else, should know that potentially there could be seven and eight-story buildings that can go up right next to their house. And as much as I'm for assisted housing and everybody needs housing, but when you have lived in a place for 22 years and all of a sudden there's an eight-story building next to your house, it's life-changing, it's disturbing, it's really, it's terrifying, to be honest with you. I'm very scared about what can happen with SB 50. So please, if you can, make a public notification and let us know where the city stands on this issue. Thanks.
Sorry. Thank you, Sandy. Josh Wallace, followed by Vimal Koppur.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have a disclaimer, and that is I'm closely associated with the previous speaker, so I did share notes with her, so I hope I'm not redundant with what she said. Good evening. My name's Josh Wallace. I'm a single-family homeowner, homeowner is in the SB 50 target zone, but all of San Carlos has the potential to be in a target zone if SB 50 passes. Of course, I'm concerned about my neighborhood and the potential towering high-rise condos, but it really, it's bigger than that. The character of San Carlos is at stake. You know, we always talk about the city of good living and whatnot. This would be the metropolis of good living, and I don't see anybody here who would be in favor of that per se. The loss of local zoning controls an epic threat in and of itself. So many things are wrong with this bill. It's equally wrong, though, not to take a stand or inform the populace of what may be coming down the pike in very short stand. So I asked my civic leaders, what's the plan? What are we going to do about this proactively? How are we going to educate people? I've received a very well-made and very informative flyer, I can't remember what the title of it is, but it was all about housing. It was incredibly well-written, and I enjoyed it. I read it cover to cover. It's not always my MO, but I didn't see anything about SB 50 or any of the other multitude of housing bills that are coming down 101 from Sacramento. So we need to trust you folks to get the word out. Let us know what's going on. Let us know where you are. Maybe we're missing something. Maybe this is a good thing in some way, but it certainly doesn't appear that way, especially considering that
Josh, would you move to wrapping up, please?
I certainly will. It's important to know that not all of these new condos will be at below-market rate. So we just, we can't sit around and hope this doesn't pass, and all the questions that I have about this are not rhetorical. I'd love to get answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Next speaker card is Vimal Koppur.
I prefer to wait if I get a question with a little more time.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I did not quite follow that.
I'll be need to wait if I'm able to get a little more time. I mean, if you have this chance to wait, then if you have more time.
Oh, no, we have a rule basically of two minutes per speaker, which I in fact neglected to tell our folks about, but that's our rule.
Fine, okay.
Two minutes.
Mere members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, I moved from India about four years back, and you know, this logo of the city, city of good living, I, this image has really, for me, I have lived that experience. With the library and the senior center being close together, that has helped me to integrate with the community and feel at home. So, and even in between, I've been to India, and I mentioned the city of good living has helped me to settle here. You know, there are certain questions which I would, because of the constraint of time, I index, I'm laying the foundation for raising some other questions, but I wish to know, if you permit the chair, anybody can tell me what is the origin of this emblem? Who is the person who initiated it? The city clerk, she couldn't dig out any record for that. So for me, like a flag or a symbol, to me, it has a, you know, maybe I have put the city on a higher pedestal in my perception. So what is it that gave this city? And is the city, I wish to have a gold standard by which we can judge the city, whether, you know, by, which is easily perceptible to anybody here, that we are, are we adjusted? Any city? No, we are a city of good living. So our bar has to be set a little higher, right? So those things of, I have spent sleepless nights trying to find the right words, how to, you know, give you due respect, but still raise some questions, which are, you know, to me, very important, like I felt that city of, you know, good living has its own certain, I would say, the bar is set high. So, you know, I would, in the limited time that, you know, being given, I have
Vimal, could you move to wrapping up, please? Could you move to finish, please?
Yes. I would resort to sending you an email where I will, you know, elaborate it further, because what I'm conveying, wish to convey, the time is not there, and I find, you know, one thing, the rules, the rules or whatever is, if they become the chains, that is not the spirit of, you know, the, I would say, the founding fathers of this country. You know, where the individual initiative or something is at the highest, there certain questions about what we are.
Vimal, I need to ask you to finish. Okay, thank you. And by the way, for everybody's benefit, just in general, I cannot commit my colleagues, obviously, to meet with folks, but in general, we are also available to meet with concerned citizens on topics citizens on topics outside of council meetings. And that is another avenue beyond email and letters and testifying at council meetings that one may wish to use. All right, let's see. That's the last speaker slip I have for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on a matter not on the agenda? Okay, we will then move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar items that are normally approved en masse without discussion. Oops. No, it's actually after that. Oh, no, you're right. I'm sorry, Ron. You're absolutely correct. It's always good to have a vice mayor to point out your mistakes, so, thank you, Ron. The next item on the agenda is actually council communications and announcements, and this is a little bit of a change that we introduced last time for my colleagues and I, rather than at the end of the meeting, to briefly make comments, emphasis on brief, please, of items of general public interest that we want folks to be aware of. So Adam, is there anything you'd like to add?
I'm just glad to be back. I'd missed the last couple of meetings, back from surgery and ready to get back at it, so I'm glad we have interesting topics today.
Well, and you know what, I have to say, you were missed, because every time I looked in this direction with Ron and the reflection of me and his monitor, I just saw a bunch of old guys, so, you know, it's nice. All right, so Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. I think I'd like to co-present with Laura. I'll share my time with her. Laura and I went to the Progress Seminar in Monterey over the weekend, and the Progress Seminar is an opportunity for community and business and government officials to meet, and there were several roundtable breakout sessions that we got to participate in, including housing and sea level rise and transportation and mobility, all topics that our council is talking about. And it was a very valuable experience. We got to hear what other cities in our county are doing, and I think it's a really valuable opportunity to collaborate and learn from each other. I'll turn it over to Laura.
Thank you. Yeah, so there were some good learnings there. A couple of topics of note, we heard a keynote speaker from Dr. Dean Winslow out of Stanford. He's one of the co-founders of an organization called SAFE, Scrubs Addressing Firearms Safety. And they're focusing really on educating, putting together curriculum for physicians to talk about firearm safety in the home, as well, they advocate for research, education, and evidence-based policy. So that was really interesting to learn, and if you want to learn more, go to standsafe.org. And then, one of the other breakouts was on mobility, a 2020 plan specifically in South San Francisco. I don't know if folks are aware, but there's a large amount of office space that's going in to that particular area, and transportation is a huge problem. Effectively, at Gridlock, I used to work on Oyster Point Boulevard for a period of time, so I know that area well. But one of the models that they've adopted is the fact that South San Francisco in that particular area, there's no homeowners per se or residents, but it's all businesses. So they're partnering with the businesses to try to solve the problem, and have asked some of the commercial entities to step up to the tune of a dollar per year per square foot. So they discussed that Genentech is gonna be supporting initiatives to improve mobility to the tune of $5 million, and they're starting to kick that program off. So it was a really interesting model to hear, and I was glad for the opportunity to learn more about it.
Thank you, Laura and Sarah. Ron, did you have anything?
No, Mr. Mayor, I was out of town between meetings.
That's right. I won't say where you were. We don't all want to be jealous. I have nothing to add this evening as well. So now, we actually will move on to the consent calendar, which, as I mentioned before, are items normally approved by the council en masse without discussion, although any council member can ask that an item be pulled off and addressed separately. Adam, I see your light is on. Did you...
I did. Yeah, I wanted to pull item 8H off the consent calendar.
H? Okay. And Sarah?
I had one very small change to the minutes from our special meeting, so that's D, but it's a very small, one-word change.
Well, I tell you what, why don't we pull both those items off, and we'll just deal with them separately immediately after we do the rest of the consent calendar? So do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar minus those two items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Chair, just, I just wanted to point out one thing, just for the record, that on item G of the consent calendar, there were some slight changes to the numbers that are in the staff report and the, the report that's gonna go to the State Department of Housing. The number went up by four, I think, overall, and there were some changes in some of the subcategories, just so, just to make it clear what you're approving tonight.
Thank you, and I thought you were, for that, I thought what you were going to remind us is that the people making motions in seconds should have read the language on the items here.
Well, you've been very good at that in the last few meetings, so I wasn't, but I always watch for that, so.
So, Adam, I believe you moved if you were so willing to incorporate that?
I have moved to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A, B, was it C?
Yes, A through C.
A through C, E, F, G, I, and J.
And then you have to read the...
Read the ordinances.
I may never...
I and J you need to read, because you delayed on the other one.
And adopting ordinance, well, we're pulling this one, right? So that doesn't count?
Yeah, you're just gonna read.
J. H and J. I and J, sorry. Item adopting ordinance, number 1544, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Title 8, Health and Safety, consisting of adding a new chapter, 8.02, to the San Carlos Municipal Code to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products in the city limits and tobacco products in pharmacies, and modifications to Chapter 8.06 to add the definition of tobacco products. And item J, adopting ordinance number 1545, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, establishing a sidewalk vendor program, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code to add Chapter 5.43 and amending Chapter 5.44, solicitations, definitions, deleting Chapters 5.60 and 10.32.300, amending Chapter 12.12.210, Regulation of Park Facilities and Making Findings Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Ron, I believe you seconded, is that...
My second is confirmed.
All right. In that case, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember Obert?
Yes. All right, let's take up item 8D, approved minutes of March 1st, 2019, City Council Special Meeting. Sarah?
I just had one small edit. It's on page, packet page 13, under review zoning to make it more attractive to housing, second bullet. It says, "Consider housing layers and levels that work for developers," parentheses, trickle mix. And I just wanted to edit trickle to triple, because we had talked about retail, then office, then residential being a triple mix. Thank you.
Excellent catch. I think Jeff probably owes you something for slipping through. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Crystal, would you please? Any discussions since we pulled the item? No? Okay. If you would please call the roll, Crystal?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second.
Ron.
Ron, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Okay, item 8H, adopt ordinance 1543, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Title 8, Health and Safety, adding Chapter 8.03, Regulation of Smoking in Multi-Unit Housing.
Thank you. As I mentioned, I missed a couple of meetings, and this was one of the items that you took up, I guess, last meeting. And while I certainly support just about everything in here, I guess my one concern is, we've set a timeframe, and if, I see this as an important public health issue, but yet we're giving 14 months to enact this in place, and most leases are a year. So to me, if we were trying to capture everybody doing something at sort of an 11-month timeline, would be a better approach to do this. I understand, so, I know we can discuss and try to pull this off and look at this differently. I know that would mean we have to bring it back at another time, but I'd like to look at a shorter timeframe to move this to an action. It's, I think it's an important issue, and I think 14 months is way too long to enact this in place.
Let me make sure I understand the bid ass spread here. It is, it sounds like you're asking that that be modified, so instead of 14 months, it was 11 months.
Right, I think so. That would capture most, if not all, leases that are coming in, given that there's a month normally after this is passed for an ordinance to go into place. So you're really capturing everything. And I understand that, you know, I get the situation of not wanting to do it sort of three months and then have a problem where, you know, people have leases and other things, it creates issues, and you have landlords need to educate and redo leases, but I think 11 months is a reasonable amount of time to do for this.
Okay. Are there any questions, other questions for Adam? And I asked my colleagues to limit it at this point to questions, because we do have somebody who would wish to address us on this item, and so I want to give them a chance to do that before we actually have a discussion and vote. Ron?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I know there's a reason that we picked the 14-month timeframe, and I'm trying to remember what that was.
Good evening, Council. Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. We spoke with Rovi...
Antonio.
Antonio. I apologize, I didn't want to get her name wrong. And she represents CAA, which represents a bunch of apartment owners and property managers. And the difficulty with going less than one year is exactly that. There are leases being negotiated as we speak, leases that have already been signed, and in some cases, they haven't even necessarily moved in yet. And this, if passed tonight, it'll be 30 days before it will take effect. Our intent is to fully start educating people and getting the language to the landlords and doing all of those pieces, so that within that 14-month time period, everything will be in place. And that's just when enforcement will begin. That's not when education, that's not when we hope that people will start changing their behaviors and revising their leases in advance. So that's the reason for that timeframe. Did I miss anything?
Good evening, Nicole.
So like Tara said, we will start enforcement after the 14-month period that we've recommended, but up until then, the county can still take all of the complaint calls that might come in, like they've offered to. So a history of any reported smoking can start as soon as the ordinance goes into effect. And then, once the 14-month hits, that's when code enforcement would be able to come in and issue notices of violation.
Thank you. Any other questions before I invite the public, the member of the public to come up and address us? Okay, Edward Schlesinger. Again, I think you probably heard my pitch before. You have two minutes. There's lights that flash on there when you get close to the end of the two minutes, so...
Council staff, my name is Edward Schlesinger, and I'm a member of Smoke Free San Carlos. And we want to thank the council and staff for everyone's work to regulate smoking in multi-unit housing. And already, actually, things are starting to change in the right direction. I've started seeing signs saying no smoking on apartment buildings, and I've been hearing that smoking in common areas is already stopping in some cases. And the San Mateo County Tobacco Prevention Program, which was mentioned as the lead kind of, who is taking calls, that work is already having, changing some behaviors in some instances. There is, however, still a long ways to go. One of our members is actually considering leaving San Carlos because her landlord is not enforcing the current no-smoking clause in their lease. And another resident, for example, has a five-month-old baby in her home, and she's surrounded by neighbors who cigarette and marijuana smoke. So there is still a lot of work to be done. This is an urgent issue, because secondhand smoke, and this is to quote the ordinance, is a toxic air contaminant for which there is no safe level of exposure. So we thank you and ask your continued support for residents against the deadly effects of secondhand smoke. Thank you.
Thank you, Edward. Open mic discussion? Somebody wants to make a motion? Have Adam.
All right. I'm gonna move to approve item H. I think we've pretty much given it a pretty good consideration, and I think 14 months is reasonable, so I'm gonna move that we just adopt it the way it is. But I understand Adam's concern.
I hate to be overly pedantic, but this one, once again, if you wouldn't mind reading as part of your motion.
Sure, okay. Item 8H, I, item H, adopting ordinance 1543, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code Title 8, Health and Safety, adding Chapter 8.03, Regulation of Smoking in Multi-Unit Housing.
Is there a second or further discussion? Okay. We'll do something unusual, I'll second it. Not commonly done, but chairs are actually allowed to second things as well. Discussion? Commentary, yes? Go ahead.
So, I mean, I brought this up, because I think it'd be, it would strengthen the ordinance, but regardless, I think, you know, moving this forward at a minimum is important to do, and I, you know, I support moving this forward. I think we could do a better job of strengthening it, but I get that people want to move forward with it, so I'm, you know, not planning to ultimately oppose it, but wanted to raise that issue, see if there are others on the council that wanted to consider that.
Any other comments? If not, Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to item nine, reports to council. These are not action items, but are to provide information for the council and the community, and provide a forum for asking questions and perhaps bringing things back in the future.
Good evening, Tara. My name is Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. Before you this evening, we have the Community Characteristics Study, or Survey, whichever you prefer. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Timothy McClarny of True North Research, who conducted the survey for us.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Obert, and members of council. Tim McClarny with True North. And we're affirmed that for the last almost 20 years, specialized in working with cities and other types of public agencies around the state, and using surveys to develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities and the customers that they serve. We've done a little over 1,000 research studies for public agencies, a little over 300 for cities, and most of the work that we use, that we do for cities, is what we'd call the Community Satisfaction Studies, which are really focused on how residents, what their needs are with respect to the services that cities provide, and what their opinions and perceptions are of the services that they're receiving. This is actually, and we do that for the city of San Carlos as well. We've got the privilege of working on that type of study several times for the city in the past. Tonight's study is actually a little different, and it was, as a researcher, kind of fun to do, where instead of really focusing on the service pieces of it, the city said, "We want to know more about the residents that live here," right? And both in terms of some of the demographic characteristics, housing characteristics, lifestyles, do they anticipate living in San Carlos in the future? And those sorts of questions. And so, as a researcher, not many cities do this, so it was kind of fun to put it together. Tonight's presentation covers just some of the highlights of the research. I've also taken a different tact in this presentation, where rather than trying to be real broad and not very deep, meaning covering all the questions, but not in any real depth in the presentation, I sort of zeroed in in certain areas. I'm gonna show you how the relationships sort of vary amongst your residents, and see some of the relationship between, you know, the types of housing and how connected people feel to the community, and what their distance is, they commute, and things like that. And so, I also welcome questions from council as I go, whichever is your preference. Okay, so, as I mentioned, you know, this, this study was a bit different than the usual studies we do for cities, and you can see some of the items that we covered in the study, looking in terms of, you know, opening up a sort of perceptions of San Carlos as a place to live, and their plans for whether they anticipate living in the city in the future, examining how connected and engaged residents feel to the community, profiling residents, housing and employment, commute, transportation. So we shift gears a lot through the, through the survey, and you'll see that we shift gears through this presentation as well, kind of hitting in these different silos of topics. And then also looking at sort of lifestyle characteristics of San Carlos residents, things that you're not gonna pick up out of a census, for example, every 10 years, but they give us some information about how your residents spend their time, what types of media they use, how much time they're spending with media, and their use of other sort of household services. In terms of the methodology, we use the same basic methodology... In terms of the methodology, we use the same basic methodology for this study that we do for the city's Community Satisfaction Study, where we start with a comprehensive database of households in San Carlos, and then we select a random sample from those households, and we recruit those individuals that we've sampled three different ways. We actually send invitations via mail that have a unique PIN number that they can enter, email, that same PIN number is linked, and then also phone, right? And so, it used to be that we did these studies only by phone. You recruit by phone, and you do data collection by phone. That doesn't work so well anymore. And what we find is that you need multiple recruiting methods, multiple ways that people can participate in a study to make sure you have that representative random sample of your community. We set out to get, I think it was somewhere between 400, maybe as many as 600. We wound up with 885 interviews, right? So we had a really strong participation from the community, which is great. And what that allows us to do is have a greater degree of statistical reliability around the estimates that we have in this survey. You see at the bottom of there, the margin of error at 3.23%. What that means is we can be 95% confident that the results we'll share tonight are within 3.23% of what we would have found had we spoken with all adult residents in the city. Okay, so with that, we'll start talking about the results. This first graphic here shows the results to an open-ended question that we asked at the outside of the study, which is, "What do you like best about living in San Carlos?" And in a lot of communities where we, and by open-ended, by the way, we didn't provide them with this list and ask them to choose which categories best represent their opinions. We actually had, gave them the opportunity to tell us in their own words, or write it into a text box, if they did it online, whatever came top of mind to them. So it's their own sort of verbatim responses. We went back and looked at those verbatim responses and then grouped them into the categories that you see here. In a lot of the cities, when we ask this kind of question, what you get are physical attributes, right? You start hearing things about like parks, or beaches, or, you know, hills, or building structures. In San Carlos, what we saw is a lot of sort of what I would call the intangible feel of the community, right? So you have small-town feeling being the number one answer at 29%. It's a nice community with good neighbors, 24%. You have something about the location that is a physical aspect, or accessibility of the city, at 21%. 14% mentioned specifically family-oriented about the community, and then the public safety and low crime. So it was a lot about sort of the feel of the community and the atmosphere here, and the sense of community that was really the, dominated that list of responses. Another open-ended question right out of the gates, where we asked, "What is the thing that you would most like to change about San Carlos?" So we asked about what they liked most about living here. We also asked them what they would most like to change. Limiting growth and development, number one, at 33%, reducing traffic congestion at 25%, and improving parking at about 15% topped those, that list. Now, from here, we get into some questions about housing and their plans for living in San Carlos in the future. On this slide, we had asked individuals, "Do you anticipate that you will, will be living in San Carlos 10 years from now?" Right? So everybody, obviously, we're talking to today is a resident, but in 10 years, do they anticipate being a resident? You had a little over half, 53%, say yes to that. They anticipate staying in the community at least another 10 years. About 18 or 19% mentioned that they don't anticipate staying in the community that long. 28% were not sure. Within this, we also had a follow-up question about, "Do you anticipate retiring in the community?" And what we found is about 40% of folks were either already retired, or weren't retired, but plan to retire in the community. So four out of 10 residents plan to be here for the long haul. Now, I mentioned we, we're going to start to dig in a little bit behind this, and there's some interesting relationships here. So what this is, is this pie chart broken out into columns within different subgroups of your residents. So on the far left there, you see at the bottom, it says engaged, connected with the community, very, somewhat, slightly, not at all. We had asked individuals a question about how engaged they feel and connected they feel to San Carlos. And what you see here is there's a pretty pronounced relationship between, "Do I plan to be here in San Carlos 10 years from now?" and "How engaged I feel with the community today?" So if I'm somebody who's very engaged, which is that far less column, 70% of those folks plan to be in San Carlos 10 years from now, right? If I'm somewhat engaged in the community, it's 55%. So if I'm not at all engaged or connected to the community right now, that feeling, only 44% of them anticipate living in the city 10 years from now. And so that, what this chart shows is there's a really strong relationship between how I, how engaged I feel to San Carlos today, and whether I plan to live here 10 years from now. You do see that there's a little bit of a relationship with having a child under 13. If you have a child in your household under 13, you're more likely than your counterparts to say, "Yes, I plan to live in San Carlos in the future." Same thing on the far right there. If you participate or belong to a community group, you're more likely to say you're going to be here for at least 10 years. Homeownership, same thing. You see a really strong relationship between already owning a home and planning to be here a long time. If you don't, and if you rent, it's about 29% who plan to be here 10 years or longer. There's some relationship in ethnicity here. You see Asian-American and Caucasian having higher expectations of staying in the community at least 10 years. And there's next-to-no relationship in gender. So we also, though, asked individuals, and this would be only homeowners, people who told us that they own a home, whether they plan to build an accessory dwelling unit, also known as a granny flat, on their property in San Carlos in the future. This is interesting, because we had some presentations about housing and where to find housing. I'm actually somebody who's building an ADU down in San Diego County, and I'll tell you, it's, it's been a chore. But we only found that about 6% of San Carlos property owners said that they would, planning to build an ADU in the next five years. But as you can see here, that depends, that relationship is very different depending on how long you've been in the community. So if you're a resident who has moved into the community in the last five years, right, so less than five years, either one year or one to four years, you're, that number jumps up to about 14 or 15%. So the new residents moving into San Carlos have a much higher expectation of building an ADU than folks who've been here five years or longer. We see, again, that relationship with, if you've got a child under 13, again, a very high likelihood of building, or a higher likelihood of building an ADU in the future. This question here, we asked individuals in general, "How engaged or connected do you feel to, to the San Carlos community? Would you say you're very, somewhat, slightly, or not at all engaged and connected?" Really interesting question overall, because what we found is, this question bears some strong relationships to some other characteristics, characteristics in the survey, which we'll be talking about down the line. But what we found is, overall, you had 16% of folks who said that they feel very engaged and connected to the San Carlos community, about 41% who said somewhat, 31% slightly, and about 11% said that they just don't feel engaged at all. Here, we have some breakouts on that same question. And so what you find is that the longer you've been here, generally speaking, the more engaged you and connected you feel to the community. So if you've been here at least five years, those folks, when compared to those who haven't been here five years, feel a lot more engaged and connected. You see that the type of home in which you live also matters, right? You have single-family homes and townhomes tend to have a higher level of feeling engaged and connected with the community than condos and apartments. Here is by employment status. Again, not really strong numbers here, but you tend to find that homemakers and retirees, folks who have a little more time on their hands at home, will often feel more engaged and connected in the community than others. And again, if you have children in the home or a teenager, that also tends to give you a feeling of, of being more connected to the community. Here shows age, that 45 to 54-year-old group standing out from the rest. And we do see some, again, some patterns in terms of ethnicity, with Caucasians saying they feel the most connected and engaged in, in the community. And then, the one on the far left there, again, it sort of makes sense that if you participate or belong to a community group, right, you've taken that step, you are much more likely than your counterparts to say you feel very engaged in the community. What's also interesting, the work-from-home folks. So generally speaking, you know, the employment didn't bear a strong relationship, but if you are employed and you work from home, that affords you, I guess, more time in San Carlos than if you're commuting outside of the city for your job. And that also was associated with a higher level of engagement in San Carlos. Continuing on that sort of engagement theme, we had asked individuals whether they participate in or belong to any, any organized community groups in San Carlos. Overall, just under a third said yes to that. And we found that, again, how long you've lived in the community really makes a difference here. If you've been, lived here at least five years, your levels of, or the likelihood that you've actually participated in a community group is quite high. Same thing with, with the housing type, single-family homeowner, townhome, condo, higher rates of participating in community group than those who live in apartments. Age, again, positive relationship there. We again see a positive relationship, or a positive relationship in terms of Caucasian and participating in these community groups. And then this is the, the big one, right? If you look on the far left of that slide, if you're somebody who feels very connected and engaged and belong, sorry, connected and engaged to the San Carlos community, more than two-thirds of the probability that you've actually participated in a community group of some sort, somewhat goes down, and then obviously slightly, or not at all engaged and connected. Very few of those individuals have taken the step to participate in community groups. So really strong connection between taking the time to participate in a, in a local community group and feeling connected and engaged with San Carlos. Now, we're going to shift gears here a little bit, and shifting over to employment and commute-related data. So this first question simply asked individuals to describe their employment status. And you can see that, overall, we had 66% of the folks we spoke with indicating that they're employed, with 58% of those employed full-time. Fairly small fraction of students, about 4%, and another fairly small fraction of homemakers, about 5%. And overall, about 23% of the folks we spoke with were retired. See the typical sort of pattern in terms of employment and relationship to age, which is, you know, as you get to that 65, the folks who are retired really jump, and the percentage who are employed goes down. And here, we see kind of an interesting relationship of education by employment status, right? The more educated you are, and particularly at the point you get a two-year degree or better, your levels of being employed full-time or part-time go way up compared to less education. We also see a relationship with gender. And then we asked individuals to describe their occupation to us, as well as their industry, right? So to get a sense of what do they do for a living, and in what industry do they do it. And about a third of San Carlos residents fell into two categories. The first is what we call, and by the way, these categories, they told us in their own words what their occupation was and what their industry was. We went and looked and grouped them into their correct categories, because we found that if you give them the categories, folks tend to miscategorize their occupation or their industry. And so we just let them tell us in their own words, and then we grouped them appropriately. But about a third of your employed residents are either professional specialty, not in IT. And that, we're talking accountants, lawyers, engineers, scientists, lab techs, right? That was number one at 19%. And the second one was executives, so we're, think, general managers, CEOs, CFOs, controllers, business owners, other high-level execs, about a third. And then it goes into sales, and the fourth one down there is, is teachers. So whether that be everything from grade school on up through college. In terms of what industries they work in, IT manufacturing was the number one. You had about one out of five folks say that they work in that industry in some capacity, followed by medical and social services, or healthcare, education, and then business services. So businesses that provide business services to other businesses. Now, we, of those people who were employed, we asked them whether or not they commute to a location outside of their home, or they work from home. And if they work from home, we asked them, "Do they have a home-based business?" I mean, do they own a home-based business? Or are they telecommuting, but from another business? In other words, they don't have a home-based business, but they, they work from home. And we found that 86% commute to work versus just 13% who work from their home. And of that 13%, it's about one-third of those, or 4% of your all employees said that they own a home-based business here in San Carlos, with the others saying not, nope, they just telecommute from another place. This shows, this is just a one slider, but we looked at the commute distance. So how far for people who commute outside the home to another location do they commute for their job? On the far left, we see that the average commute for those individuals is about 15 and a half miles. But look at the relationship between education and commute distance, right? The more educated a San Carlos employee was, the further they're driving for their jobs, right? With those at the extremes, if you have less than a high school, I mean, sorry, less than a college education, your average commute is about 8.4 miles. If you have graduate or post-grad degree, your average commute is 17 and a quarter miles. So the more educated you are, the further you're driving. Another transportation-related question, only this wasn't about the commute. This was about when traveling within San Carlos, how often do you use a personal vehicle, walk from home to a local store or restaurant on down? And you can see that about 92% of your residents, on a weekly basis, are using a personal vehicle when driving around town.
Tim, let me, let me interrupt you for a second.
Sure.
And I'm, this is a little unusual. I'm, I'm doing this only because we have a fairly significant major item that a lot of people are... Well, what I was going to ask is, if you wouldn't mind, if there's a way to sort of summarize where, where you're going?
Sure.
Thank you.
Let me just jump to the back here for you. So some of the interesting observations. You know, I looked at this as saying, you know, when you look at the overall results among your residents, they're interesting. When you start digging behind those overall residents, overall results, and you look at them by the relationships between how they answer certain questions and other questions, you see some really interesting patterns. Number one, really strong relationship between feeling connected to the community and some of these other factors. Like I said, the length of residence, homeownership status, home type, having a child in the home, et cetera. So there's some really interesting and strong relationships or predictors of whether somebody feels connected to San Carlos or not. I mentioned, you know, that the farther, or the more educated a San Carlos resident is, the further they're driving for their job. And some of these other patterns I already mentioned. I think at the bottom, one I didn't show you, or two things I want to mention. One is, you're seeing a really high use of what I would call home-based services for, among residents. People are importing folks to either clean their house, or work in their yard, or they're having people deliver things to their homes on a regular basis. So there's a lot of trips coming in to service the, the needs of your residents that are not residents, but they're coming in to help provide services to your residents. And then finally, we all hear about screen time, especially if you've got kids. We found that San Carlos residents are spending about six-plus hours a day on screens, one way or the other. So I will wrap up there, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Dr. McClarny. I appreciate it. Actually, what I'd like to do, if you don't mind, if you don't mind hanging around, are you able to do that?
I...
You gotta fly?
Yeah.
When do you have to fly?
I apologize. I've got a B to San Francisco International Airport by nine.
Oh, okay. Well, you'd probably have to leave now anyway.
If that's okay.
Because we don't like to encourage our experts speeding down the highways. Let me ask my colleagues, what I was going to do is, is if Dr. McClarny had an opportunity to come back later this evening, or stay this evening, is just to hold questions. I don't want to interfere with people asking questions. I do also want to give anybody who's a member of the public who wanted to address us on this topic a chance to speak. But I'd ask if, if we can hold questions till either later, or give them to staff, and have you come back to, at some point to do that.
Sure.
I'd appreciate it. And again, it's just, it's just because of the, the items that we have coming forward.
Certainly.
I just, because I have questions I don't need to get them answered today. Can I just email them to, just, there's some more clarifying questions I think would help me on that end.
Don't email them to me, because I...
I will not.
I will answer them.
I will stay away from you, Martin.
Thank you, Dr. McClarny. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Is there any member of the public who would wish to address the council on this item? I don't have any speaker cards, but see, Matt. Okay, thank you. In that case, we will move to the next item, which is receiving a presentation on San Carlos's efforts aimed at addressing the essential workforce housing crisis. And because this is an evening, Al, before you get started, because this is an evening for doing things a little differently, I'm actually going to invite the members of the public who wish to address us on this topic, of which I have a number of cards here, to come up and address the council before we do the staff presentation and questions. So, Al, if you don't mind. And the reason I want to do that, in part, is because I want to make sure that everybody who's waited here patiently has a chance to chime in, and also because this is a particular topic where it's complex, and helping set the context before there's even the staff report and the questions and follow-on discussion, I think is pretty important. So with that, I'm going to call people up two at a time. And please remember that we do ask you to keep your comments down to two minutes. And so, starting off with Jane Tinney, followed by President Michelle Nafak. Is Jane here?
[inaudible]
Oh, okay. I didn't get to her soon enough. Sorry. Well, in that case, we'll, we'll start with President Nafak from our friends over at the San Carlos School District. Good evening. evening, Michelle, followed by Ben For.
Hi, council members. Good to see you all this evening. I came on the right night because everyone who knows me knows how much I love data. And I just got to see a whole lot of it. So that was perfect. Fellow researcher in the house. So first of all, I'm Michelle Nafac. I'm the current president of the San Carlos School District Board of Trustees. I wanted to start off by thanking the council for agendizing this really important issue. Everyone back at the school district really truly strongly believes that having our teachers, custodians, staff, everyone who works in our system, be able to afford to live within our community strengthens the experience for our children, improves our education. We love seeing our teachers at our community events. We love seeing them downtown on the weekends and at Trader Joe's. It just really makes our kids feel connected to their schools. And so we agree with you that this is a really important issue. It's a community-based issue. It's a far-reaching issue. As you can imagine, our primary mission as a school district is to educate children. And that is the one that we've been keeping strongly in our sights of recent months. And so I'm just here to say thank you. We're eager to see how you lead the way on this issue. We're eager to think about how we can support you in your efforts. And we encourage you to continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Ben For, followed by Sandy Walker.
Hello, everybody. First, I'd like to welcome Adam and Laura and Sarah to the City Council. It's great to have you guys on. So congratulations on being elected. It's good to see everyone. It's been a while. I wanted to talk briefly about affordable housing and how it relates to SB 50. We've been spending some time, we've been in Palo Alto for a big community meeting over there. We met with the mayor of Los Altos and the mayor of Cupertino and some other people while we were there. We've been talking to Jerry Hill's staff and San Carlos folks about SB 50. And we've also been leading a conversation on Nextdoor, which some of you might have seen. What's interesting about SB 50 and how it relates back to our issue tonight of affordable housing is that SB 50 is claiming that this is going to help with greenhouse gases, that everyone's going to ride public transport, and that it's going to lead to lots of affordable housing. But what it really is, is what we call trickle-down housing, which means that if you build it, whatever you build, somehow the supply and demand is going to affect the pricing eventually, and there'll be more affordable housing, even though they're really primarily focused on building luxury condos. And Menlo Park is a good example of that. I'm seeing that the return on investment from any new developer coming into Menlo Park for one of these new SB 50 developments where they can build 75 to 85-foot homes would be 450% of what they're currently making in terms of ROI. So this is great for developers. It's incredible for unions. But the real question is, after seeing this incredible presentation by the consultant, where everyone loves the small-town feel and they love San Carlos, is this going to be a fit for us? So I just wanted to challenge you guys to look at this issue. We're all going to be talking about this for a long time. And back to what should we do? Because I know you can't just say no to everything. You know, the East Side has a role in this. We are an affected community. So building every home in our neighborhood, maybe it's not the right move. But we do think that there's got to be some housing built on the East Side, as well as throughout the rest of San Carlos. Let's distribute it. We want to talk to you guys about that. And we want to really encourage you guys to look at these issues. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Sandy Walker, followed by Selena Zilmer. Is Sandy Walker here?
Good evening, city council members and city staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Selena Zilmer, and I just wanted to share my story with you. My husband and I moved to San Carlos in 2010. And in the past eight and a half years, we have gotten married, had two children, and become invested in the community that we live. My husband has taught at Central Middle School in the San Carlos School District for the past four years. My three-year-old attends preschool at Smarty Britain Acres. And I work for Galileo Learning, which runs summer camp programs that hundreds of San Carlos children attend every summer. My daughter also participates in the soccer league through San Carlos Parks and Recs. She takes swimming lessons through Kings and gymnastics at Peninsula. We live near downtown and frequently patronize library and businesses on Laurel Street. And as you can see, we eat, shop, and play in San Carlos. We're fortunate enough to have found a rental home here in San Carlos owned by a lifelong resident whose father built her house. And she chose our family because of our ties to the community. However, the reality is, she's growing older. And before long, we expect the house is going to go on the market. And we are constantly worried about when that time comes and what that means for our future. We've looked into the HART program in San Mateo County. And under their amended requirements, we do qualify under the income level. However, for the maximum purchase price, which was just raised to $908,000, we, the only qualifying property in San Carlos is a 774-square-foot, one-bedroom, one-bath condo at $894,000. You know, how does one expect a family of four to live within these means? And additionally, because of our moderate income, we do not qualify for a BMR unit in San Carlos. And we know we're not alone in this situation. And my husband has a colleague, he has four jobs, a scrape-by, and we know more that have been on the BMR list for years and years. And we're just requesting the city investigates housing options for essential workers, either from building physical units to providing subsidies for first-time homebuyers and other creative solutions. So we've invested so much in our community, and we ask the community to reciprocate and by investing in us. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Liz Atari, followed by Andy Frisk.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I'm a kindergarten teacher at Arundel Elementary, and I've taught in San Carlos since 2002. I currently live in San Carlos with my daughter, who's a third grader, and my husband. We are temporarily renting a home in San Carlos after having sold our very, very small house in Redwood City about three years ago, with the hopes and intent of finding a more permanent home. After three years, we have not been very fortunate to find anything that would be considered affordable. Our current rent is considered below market, but requires almost half of our income after taxes. The Peninsula has been our home for the last 15 years. After three years of many open houses and getting outbid astronomically, we've almost given up on finding a permanent home. As a dedicated teacher and a parent who volunteers a lot in the community, I put in long hours and cannot imagine adding a one-hour commute onto my morning and afternoon, just to be able to stay within the community and find an affordable home. It's even more expensive for those who happen to be new teachers or those even on one income. So I wonder how we will, you know, be able to retain our good teachers who support our families, our students, who are collaborative members of our staff and schools, you know, unless there are some more affordable options that come our way. So thank you for your consideration.
You're quite welcome, Liz. Thank you for speaking. Andy Frisk, followed by Brian Perkins.
Thanks so very much for allowing us to speak. A 25-year resident of San Carlos, and I've lived and worked in the area for about 30 years. I work at an organization called the Kinos Human Training Center. We provide support services to adults with developmental and intellectual disabilities. For the past 20 years, I've been working actively with many coalitions to try and raise the issue of affordable housing. And the crisis, as I've seen it grow and grow and grow. The situation has never been worse. The desperate need for affordable housing continues, and each municipality seems to be, to be failing. And as a region, that failure is exacerbated by surrounding areas. It's clearly a regional issue, and decisions that each community makes impact all of us. It's becoming increasingly futile to try and create housing for the very, very low-income individuals that kind of supports people with special needs who will need support for their entire life. And our staff are commuting from further and further away. We're living in less safe and stable housing structures just to do that work. It's a very depressing situation to see that the people you're working with are so housing-vulnerable, or spending many, many hours a day commuting to do such important work. I recently read in a column by our mayor that there's about 1.5 billion, if I have the number right, square feet under consideration for office space. I just encourage you as much as possible to do three things. One, please think regionally. This issue is not just a San Carlos issue. It's a regional issue. Second, whatever we can do to create more BMR units, I think it's our responsibility as a community to do that. And then finally, whatever we can do to not contribute to exacerbating the housing, jobs, and balance, I think in any kind of non-housing development, that has to be looked at carefully. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Andy. Brian Perkins, followed by David Pollak.
Good evening. I'm Brian Perkins. I'm a 22-year resident and live on St. Francis Way. I wanted to echo what Andy was just saying. I wonder what kind of a community we're going to be when we can't find a space in our community for those with special needs? And what kind of a community we're going to be when we can't find a space in our community for teachers or daycare providers and so forth? I, for one, would like to live in a community where people who are serving my food can also afford to eat, to live here. And I would like to be able to think that we're fair enough that we can find opportunities, not for everybody, because not everybody can live in San Carlos. We all recognize that. But for many, because that is our duty. And I hope that this council, when they're looking in particular at the commercial office-based development that's being proposed, will take a very close look at requiring those developers to actually build housing along with those commercial developments, or to at least find a partner so that they can be done in proximate location to those developments. Because unless you do that, there's going to be a tidal wave of competition for the remaining housing that we have in this community. And the people they're going to lose, they're going to be the teachers, they will be the developmentally disabled, they will be the waitresses and waiters and so forth. We can do better than any of that. And this council is much better than any of that. So thank you so much for your time. And please fight for a little bit of justice on behalf of the others. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. David Pollak, followed by Diane Savage.
Read or look up, that is the question. San Mateo is the least affordable county in the country. We've been grappling with a housing shortage for decades. We've been slow to react. Given the rate of response by city councils up and down the Peninsula, it will take at least 100 years, optimistically, to meet current targets. Bay Area councils have been deeply involved in finding solutions to this problem with CASA and the resulting CASA compact from the get-go, working off the roadmap that CASA created. Many bills have been working their way through the California Legislature. SB 50, the More Homes Act that others have mentioned, is just one of many addressing this crisis. Our local representatives have ample opportunity to provide input and suggest revisions along the way. In short, no one's been blindsided by anything that's going on here. This is why I especially take umbrage with City Manager Malpys' recent comments to the Daily Journal claiming that bills such as SB 50 invade the sanctity of our single-family neighborhoods and urges a more cautious and thorough, thoughtful process which works with the, within the confines of the community's character. This is kind of code for San Carlos as the real victim here. We're doing, we, we want to maintain our gentrified suburban enclave like Cupertino and Palo Alto. We've done enough. In other words, fear-mongering on government overreach. And that's not a good look for the city. Swift transformative action is absolutely necessary. If city councils don't start taking the right steps to rethink housing, Sacramento will lose any confidence it has left in the city's willingness to deal with the crisis and take the, the control of the situation out of our hands. So thank you for doing the right thing by all members of the community.
Thank you, David. Next up is Diane Savage, followed by Ron Pielverson.
Good evening. My family owns The Reading Bug. It's a local children's bookstore on Laurel Street. I also have two adult children that live in San Carlos. We've been located at 785 Laurel Street since 2009. And I think we forged a really good relationship with the community. In addition to offering public author events virtually every week to the community, we also have partnered with the schools, and we provide nationally-known authors free of charge to those schools to speak and engage with the children in this community. However, like other small retailers, we struggle with the escalating rents that we pay, as well as with the payroll for our employees. The American Booksellers Association suggests that rent and payroll, in order to have a bookstore that doesn't lose money, rent and payroll should not be more than 30% of the bookstore's gross revenue. But our rent and payroll, including health insurance for our employees who work over 20 hours a week, totals significantly more than 30% of our gross revenue. We also struggle with recruiting and maintaining a stable workforce. And for those of you who have been to our store, really, the thing that makes our store special is, are the people who work in that store. They are, they're experts in books, and they, they share that expertise with all the customers that walk in the door. They're really remarkable people. In addition to my daughter-in-law, The Reading Bug has three full-time employees and a number of part-time employees. None of the three full-time employees lives in San Carlos. Our store manager wanted to be here tonight, but she commutes more than two hours a day. She lives in San Jose, because that's the closest she can come to living in San Carlos. She commutes, it's a killer commute, and she wasn't able to stay tonight. The other two full-time employees commute also. One commutes from Foster City, and the other commutes from San Bruno. Most of our part-time employees, with the exception of high school students who are members of the San Carlos community, also are commuting.
Can you move to wrapping up, please?
Yes. Housing costs are a very real problem for The Reading Bug. If you saw in the presentation before this, 2.2% of the, of the people work in retail stores in San Carlos. There's a reason for that. And I really fear that without solving the housing situation, stores like The Reading Bug and other stores that make San Carlos special will disappear. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Pielverson, who I think I managed to mangle your name yet again, followed by David Crabbe.
That's the only reason why I show up to these meetings, is to hear my last name in different ways. So yeah, my name is Ron Pielverson. I'm a five-year resident of San Carlos, and I've also been in tech for about 20 years. And while I certainly and absolutely fully agree and support with everything that's been said previously about the importance of affordable housing, essential housing for workforces, for teachers, for service personnel, and all, and, and the like, I do want to talk about for a moment about the technology industry, because it is an industry that I know quite well. And both in my volunteer roles, as well as as part of my profession, I've actually had the opportunity on many, many occasions to host delegations from across North America, as well as around the world, Latin America and Europe, of government officials and companies who come here, who want, who basically want what we have. They come here to try to understand the technology industry so they can take the learning and take that back to wherever they happen to be from, whether it's elsewhere in America, in Canada, Europe, or Latin America. And they want an industry that fosters 21st century jobs. They want innovation, they want an industry that promotes innovation. And I'm going to tell you right now, we risk losing this industry, this industry that we've been given, and this industry that others are fighting so hard to create, we risk losing it. Because our industry relies on all sorts of people. It relies on managers, it relies on software technicians, software engineers, it relies on support staff. And if we cannot bring those people in here, because they can't, not even they can afford this housing, then we will, we will, we will lose them as employees, we will lose them as talent, and we will lose the industry. And I see this happening. I see us losing to other parts of the, of the United States, as well as other countries around the world. So certainly, without question, housing is a moral and social justice issue, and we need to solve it. And those who have spoken on that, who brought up those points, I agree with them wholeheartedly. But I'm also going to tell you that it's an economic issue. And if we don't solve it, it'll threaten the entire economic engine of this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Next up is David Crabbe, followed by, I believe, it's Sanji Hughes? Good. Thank you. You can correct me when you come up.
Good evening, Mayor Olbert and, and council. Yeah, I'm going to try to put this in a little bigger context, if it's possible. I don't know. We've come to a crossroads on housing in San Carlos. From San Francisco to Santa Clara County, the cost of housing is having a major impact on the region's need to fill lower and middle-income jobs, such as retail, home service workers, nurses, teachers, police, even doctors are finding it hard to find here. And with learning, the tech industry is also finding it hard to live here. Our current city planning is leading to displacement, increased commute traffic, exhausted employees, and morally unsustainable and unbalanced community. As I see it, we've got about five choices. As I see it, we've got about five choices, and you may add a few more, but anyway. One is, continue to approve projects that produce more jobs than housing, which will increase the jobs-housing imbalance and lead to even higher housing costs, higher job stress, more displacement, more traffic. Number two, stop approving any further large jobs-producing projects until we decide where the new employees will live. Third, plan and approve more housing with emphasis on housing that will be affordable to new employees while severely limiting growth, job growth, until the housing stock catches up. Four is, this has been suggested by some people, increase public transit options to the East Bay and beyond, so many employees can go out to the East Bay and live. And the last one is ADUs, which we found out there's not too much on there, but if we do do ADUs, make sure that they're rent-controlled, so that people could do ADUs and rent them for $4,000 a month. And so, we need to do that. So, none of these choices are easy, and I feel that the city needs to take a little breathing room here, and I'm recommending that the city actually puts a moratorium on any new commercial development in San Carlos, over maybe 10,000 to 20,000 square feet, until we kind of figure this whole situation out. It'd be temporary, but I think we need to kind of think about revisit the housing ordinance, not the housing ordinance, the housing element of the general plan, or even maybe revise in the general plan. I've been told that there's been potential of about 65,000, I mean, R&amp;D development up to about 2 million square feet on the east side. That can produce up to 6,500 to 10,000 new jobs. You translate that into at least 4,300 new housing units, there's no way in heck that San Carlos can reach that level. And so, we've got to stop, we've got to faucet this running, it's overflowing the sink. The thing to do is shut the faucet off. And that's my wrap-up, right there.
Good timing.
Stop, stop the jobs until we catch up on the housing. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Sanji?
Suzie.
Suzie, okay, Suzie. I'm sorry, it's just like, your handwriting is perfect, it's my eyes that are defective.
Yeah, I have great handwriting. So, no, thank you for letting me be here. I'm happy to speak to the city council. My name is Suzanne Hughes, or Sanji, or Suzie, whatever you want to call me. I'm a 45-year resident of San Carlos, and I'm also the executive director of One Life Counseling Service in San Carlos. We serve about 7,500 low-fee counseling services hours each year. We also are in all the San Carlos schools. And I just came here on behalf of me being executive director, and also because I'm a lifelong resident. So, first, I wanted to give you just a bird's-eye view of what we're seeing come into the center, and what clients we're seeing, and what problems we're having. With the housing crisis, there's the usual, we're forcing out a lot of our service industry, teachers, nonprofit employees, which have a dear place in my heart. But the other thing that we are actually missing is there's secondary or more insidious things that happen once you don't have affordable housing. So, the client that we typically see spends 50% to 70% of their income on housing. And what happens is, they have to, because food, clothing, and shelter are basic human needs, what ends up happening is that they're no longer able to pay for medical and mental health services. So, you ask somebody, and I'll give you an example of a very well-known house cleaner in the area, and a man that works at a local construction, one of their daughters has issues with mental health, very severe. They were on Medi-Cal, which we accept as an agency, but then they finally just had enough income where they weren't. And they were no longer able to pay the copay. So, if you talk about somebody having to spend $50 of their copay, they're well, they've got insurance, but it doesn't cover. They can't afford the $200 a month that it costs for somebody in their family to access basic health services. So, life, you know, needed health services. So, that's what we're seeing, more and more and more. And luckily, we'll see anybody, any fee, we'll take them, and we'll have them come in, thanks to grants. But it's a secondary problem, that people won't go get the services they need. And I think we're in the middle of an identity crisis as a city, where we're changing, we're not the truck drivers, the male drivers, all those things we used to be. And this is a great opportunity for San Carlos to redefine itself as a city that does take care of all of the industries and everybody, all the residents that are here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Suzanne. Brian Neder, followed by Sam Hersberg.
Mayor, city council members, staff, my name is Brian Neder. I'm CEO of GatePath. We're a 99-year-old organization that serves children and adults with developmental disabilities. We serve about 1,000 people every day. And I'm here to talk on behalf of the folks that we serve. Probably half of everyone here either has a family member or knows someone with a developmental disability or intellectual disability. And the challenge for housing is really unmet for this population. We had two folks who were in our program in San Carlos who lost their group home and were moved in the middle of the night to the Central Valley because they couldn't find a place to live. And so, we're here making you aware of that need, so that when housing does become available, that folks that we serve, adults, have an opportunity to be seeking housing, that there are set-asides for them. We've had a chance to talk at other city councils, as well as the county, to raise awareness for this need. A lot of developers were never aware of the challenge that the folks that we serve have in finding housing. A lot of group homes that they used to have available are closing down because they can't afford to be in the area anymore. And so, that means that the acute need for housing for adults with developmental disabilities continues to rise. And for the parents that we serve, listening to the angst and fear they have, where their adult children are going to live after they pass, is palpable. And so, what I ask is that the city staff, the city council, make provisions available so that those that we serve have an opportunity to be in the list for housing. Many of them live independently, or live with independent living support services. And so, ask you to be aware of that, so that when we do make plans, that they're including them in our community, so they can stay here and not have to move. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Sam Hersberg, followed by Tim Hilborn.
Good evening, city council members and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this tonight. I'm going to offer a few solutions, suggestions. Kevin Mullen is introducing an Assembly Bill 1598 to bring back redevelopment agencies. It's a real tool that might be helpful in creating more affordable housing. That's something to be considered. In terms of locations in the city, I'm giving a presentation, I'm giving an orientation tour to the National APA Conference this weekend in San Francisco, where planners from around the world coming to learn how San Francisco's in the Bay Area is developing. One of the themes in San Francisco is 20%, of the city is where all the development is happening, and it's all of a higher density, but it's not in the single-family residential areas. In San Carlos, I'd suggest there are several areas that could be looked at for further housing, and one is the areas on either side of Britton Howard, between the greater east San Carlos neighborhood and kind of the arts and wine neighborhood on the other side. And also, the whole Grand Boulevard is yet to be completely fulfilled, particularly on the west side of El Camino Real, where you could have more mixed-use, or three-story, triple-use type of housing. If really you're going to be having that level of commercial development, as David Crabbe mentioned, the city may want to consider a community-to-benefit zoning to meet its housing needs, take care of infrastructure, parks, pedestrian bicycle amenities, traffic, parking solutions. Redwood City use the exact same, they have that type of zoning, and they use the exact same consultant, Diet Mbata, who developed the city's San Carlos east-side zoning. And if the city had the political will to create a mechanism, it might be able to come up with some comprehensive solutions. And then, I just wanted to touch on ADUs, and looking at the slide from the prior presentation, in 2018, the city only had 18 building permits for ADUs, which was twice the prior year. And that's just, that's not enough, but the county Office of Sustainability has indicated if every single-family resident in the county was able to put an ADU, we'd solve the affordable housing crisis. So, I'm going to suggest perhaps the city could develop a menu of options to encourage more ADUs, and survey residents to find out what incentives they would want to create, to create an opportunity and an incentive to build more of these in San Carlos.
Can you move towards wrapping up, please?
Yeah. Something needs to change, because there are many, many older residents, living in single-family residents in the city without children, under 18, living with them. And to be able to put ADUs for extended family use or affordable housing is a real opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Tim Hilborn, followed by Gene Danner.
Good evening, thanks for letting us speak. Senate Bill 50 by Scott Wiener and the CASA Compact have virtually ignored the funding issues California cities have faced, especially during and after the Great Recession. Before blaming cities for their lack of housing, one should examine local municipalities' funding sources, tax increments, and required deficit spending. Revenue funding for industrial and commercial projects far outpaces funding for residential projects. The dissolution of redevelopment agencies has drastically changed how certain entities, including K-12 education, housing, and other public services, are now funded through tax increments and passed through revenue. Cities are being blamed for the housing crisis, while the state has set them up to fail by both removing their major funding source and incentive for affordable housing, and not providing any new incentives for cities to approve high-density or affordable housing over commercial high-tech development. The state and regional agencies have created unrealistic targets by regional housing needs assessments and A-BAG. High-tech sectors are the ones truly responsible for causing this jobs-housing imbalance, major gentrification in most cities, gridlocked traffic, supercommutes, and the explosion of the Bay Area's population, which has displaced so many people. This has gone intentionally unnoticed by many politicians, such as Scott Wiener, Nancy Skinner, and the CASA Compact Committee. The main reason being that these high-tech CEOs and developers are the same power brokers pushing to heap all the affordable housing responsibilities onto the cities and their communities. High-tech companies who are also causing this so-called housing crisis are posturing their contributions to the housing problem by throwing cash at it. High-tech's answer to everything. One example is the Zuckerberg Foundation funneling $500 million to nonprofit housing advocate groups to build 8,000 new homes. The latest is Google teeing up to add thousands of new homes in Mountain View where their headquarters are located. The list goes on and on, but very little has been built so far. Let me leave you with this one fact. The total annual revenue for all California cities combined in 2017 was $77.53 billion. The total annual revenue for Google in 2017 was $110.38 billion. One high-tech company makes almost 40% more than all California cities combined. High-tech companies need to be building high-density affordable multi-family housing on their campuses and throughout our communities. It is not the responsibility of cities to come up with this money, high-tech can come up with it. I would like to see the city address this, and I would like to see much more communication about these bills that are carpet bombing Sacramento, and more information going to out to the public from the city.
Can you move to wrap up, please?
All right, I'm wrapping up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Next up is Gene Danner, followed by Vimal Koppur.
Hi, my name is Gene Danner, and I'm a 42-year resident of San Carlos. When you see the Help Wanted signs all over town, like that huge sign in front of Trader Joe's, "Help Wanted," or "Accepting Applications," it's clear that to maintain the quality of life that we cherish, we need to make sure that we provide for those who make that quality of life possible. Not only should those folks be able to work here, but they also should be able to live here and participate in the life of the community. That includes teachers and school district staff, first responders and city staff, and those in the service occupations all over town. We need to really keep, we need to look at that, because this is what's going to keep our town, the town of, the city of good living. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Next up is Vimal Koppur.
Mayor, I wish to, you know, share my experience. After five years of my job in a third-world country in Delhi, I was able to get a flat from the city of Delhi. And there are people, you know, lined up, and they draw by lot. I mean, and everybody's craves for, you know, cities themselves having the resources to build. I do not know, this country provides funds to all, even for housing, the funds go from here to India, right? Why the city is not able to take up the jobs and give it on contract to build, but keep the control themselves? Wheeler Plaza, it's built in the heart of the town, but it is done in a heartless manner, right? The whole, it is your land, it has commercial and, you know, residential. Commercial can, you know, really set off, even if you wish to give it to, you know, lower end of the, you know, absolutely, teachers and all, they could, you know, you had a commercial building and a good opportunity, which I feel it has been done in a manner. I told you, you people need to set your bar very high, very high. I don't wish to dwell more on this.
Thank you, Vimal. Is there anybody else who would wish to address the council on this item? You may come up and speak for two minutes, and if you have a card, if you can hand it to me, or that's great.
Just save her a trip.
Thank you.
I am representing, first and foremost, my family. However, I am here also on behalf of Charities Housing. We are offering the project at 817 Walnut, 24 Unit, all 100% affordable housing. But I'm not here to speak on that today. I am, I want to speak about my personal experience with affordable housing. I am first and foremost a first-generation immigrant. My family came here back in 95. We settled in the South Bay, San Jose, Los Gatos area. We were on welfare system. My family worked very hard, and initially, we had, we stayed in affordable housing. And I can tell you that affordable housing works, because I, my family is one of the prime examples. My brother and I, we got the chance to go to school, we got to be very highly educated. We are working in the workforce, contributing to the communities. And at this point, we are proud owners of a townhouse, which is, you know, for young, young adults, is sometimes, as of right now, is very hard to achieve. However, I just wanted to stand up and say that affordable housing works, and I hope, and I do appreciate those who came up here and offer their different views, which is great, because as now that I am a builder, community builder, developer, I do want to work with all those individuals, and hopefully make things a lot better, and prove to everyone that this is still the city of good living.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this matter? This won't be the only time that this issue comes before the council. It's a fairly involved, as you might imagine, complex issue, so there'll be plenty of opportunity for people to speak in the future. I do want to check in with my colleagues, however, typically at this point, we often end up taking a brief break. Would that be something that people would be amenable to?
Yes.
Yes, please.
All right, we will adjourn for, can we say five minutes? Be back here at 9:10.
Review housing supply and production, and to look at where we are today, and how we got here. When we talk about housing, it's important to talk about the whole picture, not only how we make market-rate or below-market-rate housing units, but where do we put housing and why do we put it there? There are numerous facets to the production of housing, and we could do singular presentations on many different facets. We have prepared a very robust presentation for you this evening. We're going to be breaking it into three pieces to break it up a little bit, and we're going to have Lisa Porus, our planning manager, talk about the housing element and regional housing needs assessment, and below-market-rate housing programs, and an overview of what the state's doing by Martin Romer, our economic development and housing manager, and I'll wrap it up. And I'm going to start the evening by going over land use, our general plan, and taking a look at how we do land use and some statistics this evening to lay the groundwork for the discussion, and perhaps future discussions of this issue. Let's start with the big picture, the current snapshot. We have 12,079 housing units in the city of San Carlos, and we have a population of about 29,000. about 29,897. And persons per unit, that's an interesting statistic, at least if you're a data person, it's 2.58. And that number comes from the Department of Finance, and it's a number that's used by the department and other agencies for modeling housing and how many units are produced and how population per housing unit and things like that. So we did use this kind of a number when we put together our general plan, and just as an aside, I noted tonight that in the HIP Housing presentation, they had six units on Cherry Street and 18 people living in those six units. So it kind of gives you a balance. So it's really important for us to take a look at how our land use is put together in our community, and this map is important because it shows through these different colors that you see on the screen here where the different types of land uses are and are not allowed. As you can see, the majority of the map is dedicated to single-family residential, and that's that yellow color that you see here, and there's some other colors dispersed throughout this area, and those are open space and other things other than that. But 60% is dedicated to single-family residential in our community. Another 8% is dedicated to multifamily housing, which is primarily located down in this area here, this triangular area, down near our downtown and along our El Camino Real corridor. And we have about 20% of our land area that's dedicated to commercial, industrial, and office uses on the other side of the railroad tracks there. The highest number of housing units in our community can be built in this area that's where you see these brown and red colors right here in this area. And there's a reason for that, and this is because these areas are close to the train station, they're close to mass transit. If you look at old pictures of the city of San Carlos in our foyer out here, you'll see people, lots of people walking to the train station. So historically, San Carlos, like many of the cities on the peninsula, on El Camino Real in the Bay Area, started from mass transit areas and grew from there. And they grew in a very specific way because if you take a look at, for instance, the pattern of streets in here, what you'll note is that the streets are pretty close together. And if you look closer, when you start to look at the parcels in this area too, what you'll see is that the parcels are smaller too. And so what happened over the years is that it's more compact and more walkable. You can get from shop to shop, and you can do your shopping, and you can, from your apartment or your condominium, and the roads and sidewalks are good, it's safe, and you don't need to cross a railroad track or a major thoroughfare to get to these areas. And so that's how many of our areas where you see higher-density housing built, and that's why. In contrast, if you look at the industrial and office sectors of our community, you'll see that the road pattern is much more spread apart, the lots are much larger. So if you are going to walk, for instance, from place to place in that area, you'll be competing with trucks and loud noises, and it's a less hospitable environment for people. And it's done that way on purpose. That's the way many of our cities have developed over the years. On the left-hand side of the screen over here, what you'll see is each of these colors, then, in the residential land uses, is associated with a density. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about density and what it means. It's a very important part of our conversation. So these things, these numbers that you see up on the left-hand side of the screen there, these different colors, you'll see a density, 12 or 10 to 20 dwelling units to the acre in multifamily low-density there. And, for instance, and ours goes to a maximum of 59 dwelling units per acre in the brown areas that you see in these areas located here, and 50 dwelling units to the acre in this red area. So the city has made a very conscious decision in terms of saying, here's how many dwelling units to the acre we will allow in our community. And this was a big part of the discussion when we did our general plan update back in 2009. And again, these were decisions that were made in a very conscious way. So, general plan build-out, so what happens? So the general plan was adopted in 2009. General plans are generally a 20-year plan. We're right in the middle of our 20-year plan. In terms of the existing general plan, as you see there on the screen, 11,960 housing units were there, were in San Carlos at the time, and the new general plan anticipated about 1,436 units for a total of 13,396. Our population would then increase by about 34, 46, up to a population of about 32,000, and our jobs would increase too by about 10,000. In the big picture, if you look at our population versus jobs, you do see that, you know, just big picture, bird's-eye view, we do have higher population housed in our community than jobs. Now, to drill down just a little bit further to talk about how land use has been determined in our community, this map shows, all these different colors and these numbers show that when we did the general plan update back in 2009, the community was cut up into pieces, study areas, so it was easier to study these specific areas, too hard to do the whole thing all at once. And they were very distinct in terms of the characteristics, the kinds of units, and the kinds of businesses and offices and things that we saw in each one of these different areas. Areas 1, 2, and 3 that you see there on the screen were recognized in the city's general plan and by the community at that time as our transit-oriented development corridor. Transit-oriented development is something that's walkable to transit, so if you live in a house, condo, you can walk whether you're within half a mile or a quarter mile of mass transit. So that's sort of the nirvana of housing, is to put it as close as you can to mass transit and get people out of their cars. So the city at that time said that areas 1, 2, and 3 are transit-oriented development areas. And this area, this area number 2, just keep an eye on that, that yellow area is about a quarter mile away from the train station. Some of these, the tail of it here to the north is a little bit farther, and area 1 is about half a mile away from the train station. And so that was the intent of designating those areas in our general plan as our areas where most of the housing should go because it's close to transit and it's walkable. Now, at about that same time as we were putting together the general plan, we started in advance in about 2007. And at that time, we had done some work, and at the same time we were just starting our general plan, the regional agencies, the Association of Bay Area Governments, and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, who have purse strings that are associated with grant funding for capital improvements and studies and things like that, said to the cities in the Bay Area, "If you tell us on a map where you will have most of your housing built, your highest-density housing built within a quarter mile, half mile of mass transit, what we will do, what we'll promise you is that we will put you first in line for grant funding, for future grant funding for capital improvement projects and studies." So what happened is, at that time, the council saw this as an opportunity and adopted this map by resolution, and then it was adopted by the A-BAG Executive Board. And so that established the area, and shortly thereafter, A-BAG and MTC gave San Carlos a grant for $3.5 million to do the East Side Connect project to improve mobility for the east-side residents and future residents of this purple area right here to the train station. It gave the city money to improve mobility and recognize that those are the areas where we have planned for those units. Furthermore, all of the housing units that were anticipated in the general plan, 1,436 units, could be accommodated within this PDA map. So those are our land use maps, very important to the future of our conversation. And they say that the proof is in the pudding, and so what this map shows is in that purple hatched area that you see on this map is the PDA, and that is also area 1 of our general plan, that yellow area that we talked about, area 2 actually. And what you see on this map is that the majority of the housing that's been developed over the last few years, the high-density housing, has occurred within our PDA within about a quarter mile to a half mile of our mass transit station. So it's the policies that were set forth in the general plan are coming to fruition. So let's back up a little bit because the, this word, when we talk about density, it's an important word because it means the supply, how do you create your supply? And essentially, what residential density means is the number of residential dwelling units per acre of land. And so, and as I noted from that map earlier, our general plan expresses the number of units that you can get as units per gross acre. So the word "density" over the years has somewhat been a divisive word historically, and city planners have tried to explain it to folks for many, many years. And as you can see from this diagram that we have on the screen, housing units can be pieced together in many different ways, and we call them typologies, a number of different ways. I'll call it a housing continuum, and you can start from your single-family detached, which we're familiar with, duplex, all the way up to high-rise apartment buildings. So there's a lot of different ways to put density together, and it's not just a concept or an idea. What we're attempting to show here is that they're real units, and here's what they look like. For instance, if we take a bird's-eye view and we look at typical density, single-family in our community is anywhere from 3 to 6 dwelling units to the acre. And you can see on the right-hand side of each picture, you'll see how things are laid out. So of course, with single-family, we have a bigger backyard, you have a two-car garage. For townhouses, you have attached walls. They go up in density because they're closer together, they have less open space, but they still have those two parking spaces. Multifamily apartments, net density goes much higher. You see parking all put together in one space, 36 to 80 dwelling units to the acre, and that's the transit village or trestle that you see there in that photo. And then mixed uses, where you have commercial retail on the ground floor and then residential units above, and that's much of what we see going in around the downtown. And the one on the bottom right is one that was approved by our planning commission recently. And so what are some of the constraints to building higher density? There's lots of constraints, and there's lots of opportunities too. So what are some of the constraints? Well, does your general plan and zoning allow for these higher densities? Yes, in our community, in those areas that I showed you earlier, we do. However, we have set a limit on the densities, and it was a very, again, a very conscious decision because of community sensitivity at that time, people saying, and you saw it tonight in the survey, we want a small town, a village-like atmosphere in our community. And so that goes to how much we are willing to accommodate in terms of density and height and things like that. But yes, we do accommodate it based on the size and character of our own community. In terms of development standards, there's a number of development standards that make it difficult to build housing. Some of them are high-parking and open-space requirements. As, you know, everybody focuses on parking, and rightly so, people are worried that parking, if you don't provide enough parking on-site, then those people are going to park in the neighborhood. And open space, some of the, as you could see from the diagrams earlier, you know, the more density you have, the less open space you see on some of the multifamily apartment dwelling units. But that open space and that parking is very, very expensive to put in. Height limitations are something else, and what we've done in our community is we've tried to transition our heights. So we put most of the height in those areas that we saw in and around the downtown. We capped our height limit in the residential areas at 50 feet and out toward El Camino Real. And then what we did is we transitioned that height down to single-family because we're sensitive to the character of, and to the views and privacy issues that we've heard from our community. But those height limitations create issues in terms of creating housing. Extensive and lengthy approval processes are very cumbersome for the development community, and for many, many years in the Bay Area, cities got reputations as a place where developers didn't want to build housing. They would just go to the next city that was more in tune or cooperative or had more up-to-date development standards. We have up-to-date development standards, and we have a good process. Community concerns, of course, increased traffic, parking overflow on the streets, and privacy, these are the issues that the planning commission and the council grapples with when considering these projects. Other density factors, what other factors increase density? Well, smaller units, of course, and in the below-market rate or the workforce or essential housing world, what we're seeing is smaller and smaller units. Now, what we're seeing, for instance, like with 817, we're seeing units in the 300 to 400 square-foot range, and that might surprise some people, and it might kind of, you might think to yourself, "Could I ever live in such a place?" But I can assure you that they are designed as very livable places, and I've worked on some of these and gone on visits of these, and the way they're designed is very carefully designed and very workable. Tandem parking, where you put parking one in front of the other, is something that more recently has been adopted by cities. Cities didn't want to do that for many, many years, and developers didn't either. Now, that's a way to increase density. Reducing your landscape and open space requirements, again, this land is extremely expensive, so anything you can make, do to make the cost of the development and construction lower is helpful. Reduce parking requirements is something that we've taken a look at, Lisa might talk a little bit about that, but that's very difficult for communities to accept too. Sometimes it just doesn't compute. State density bonus is something where the state has given, and Martin will talk about this a little bit. State density bonus allows for developers to get higher density and concessions from the city for extra units. Factors that decrease irregular sites. The picture that you see on the screen there is the long, narrow site for the transit village, and that created a lot of issues. So many of the sites that we have left for development are more difficult, larger units. What we're seeing is nowadays, developers in our community don't want to build the smaller units. They can make their return on their investment by building much larger units and avoiding our BMR ordinance and building under that threshold of seven units or more. So that's what we're seeing fairly often nowadays. And then again, parking requirements, $50,000 a parking space these days is another issue. And so what I'm going to do now is hand it off to Lisa, and then Martin will get up, and I'll come up at the end and wrap things up.
Thank you, Al. Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening, council members. So, we just heard from Al about the factors that can impact a project's ability towards achieving maximum densities. So I just wanted to share with the council some of the regulations and programs that we currently have right now, today. So in response to the factors that sort of make it more difficult to achieve the maximum densities and get the number of units that our zoning code already allows, the city's adopted regulations that can help increase the unit counts, and also some programs that can help temper housing costs. And these are the city density bonus, parking reductions, and unbundled parking. And all of these, of course, as I mentioned, are found within the city's zoning ordinance. So the first one, the city density bonus, essentially what this does is this allows projects that include very low or low-income units to receive one additional market-rate unit. So for every very low or low unit they get, they get one more market-rate unit. So that's something that we currently have right now. With respect to parking, applicants are eligible for 20% parking reductions by right if they are subject to the city's transportation demand management or TDM ordinance, or if they are within a quarter mile of a transit stop. They also get a 20% parking reduction by right. They also get a, uh, 20% parking reduction by right. And then the third one, shared parking, this basically works where the city could consider granting, um, up to 40% parking reduction for projects that share parking across different uses, um, and on the same site. So within one project where there's two different uses, so this would be a mixed-use project, um, and this would require planning commission approval upon meeting, uh, specific criteria. So there's certain findings that would need to be made in order to, um, possibly be able to obtain, um, this type of parking reduction. The next one is that when a, a parking reduction could be considered by the planning commission under a use permit approval, um, based upon a parking demand study. So this would be a requirement, um, that the project would need to provide, to provide that analysis and, and also again, meeting certain criteria to see if there's a potential to reduce the otherwise normally required number of parking for that particular project. And then, uh, the last one, um, while not necessarily a parking reduction, uh, for projects that are located in an established parking district, and essentially we have one or the contiguous ones around the downtown core, if a project is proposed in that area by right, if the applicant felt it was necessary to do so or it would pencil out best for the project, they could instead opt to pay a parking-in-leave fee instead of providing, um, the, um, pro, the, excuse me, the parking within the project itself. And then the last one on the screen, um, is through a minor use permit approval, an applicant could have the option to decouple parking from housing units. And so basically what this does in turn is it allows the renter or the homeowner the option to purchase, um, parking separately from the cost or the lease, uh, purchase price of the actual unit. And so the idea here is really to reduce the cost of housing. So again, these are things that the city currently has, um, as part of its regulations. So now that we've started to uncover some of the driving factors towards meeting densities and overall housing production, I'd like to discuss the primary, uh, policy document that governs housing. And that is of course, the city's housing element. And the reason why we call it the housing element, most of us already know, but in case those that don't, it is one of the seven mandated elements, um, that must be included in the city's general plan. And of course, the general plan is the city's, um, guiding document, primary guiding document, um, or blueprint for how the city will grow and develop over time. So all cities and counties are across the state must develop a housing element. And this has been a state requirement and a requirement by the state and also accompanied with a series of housing laws since the year 1969. So California's housing element, uh, law acknowledges that in order for the private market to adequately address the state's housing needs, local governments must adopt plans and regulations that provide opportunities for and also not to unduly constrain housing development. So as a result, housing policy in California traditionally rests largely on the implementation of local plan, local general plans and housing elements. However, um, this is starting to change as we've seen and we've heard tonight where we're starting to see more state bills that would affect how local municipalities address the region's housing needs. So what is the purpose of a housing element? What does it do? What does it contain? The primary purpose of the housing mel, element is to maintain our existing housing stock, making sure that we preserve what we have, it's maintained in a safe and adequate manner. And that we also have policies and programs and zoning tools to facilitate new housing development to meet the needs of our community. So it consists of a series of goals, policies and programs. It evaluates the city's demographics and socioeconomic data and identifies housing needs on a short and, um, near-term future basis. And right now the state, um, is requiring that every city and county, um, update its housing element every eight years. Our current housing element is for the period 2015 to 2023. So we have about four more years in our current housing element. It also, the housing element also must contain a list of sites that are zoned to allow housing to occur at levels that accommodates the seat, the city's expected levels of growth. So while the city itself doesn't construct the housing, we need to set the table that allows for it to occur. And that means we have to have the right zoning in place with the right densities and intensities that allow, um, us to meet our expected levels of growth. So one of the things is I just wanted to say, um, is that it's really key to note that the housing element must be certified by the state. In fact, it's not just our housing element, but every city and county in the state of California is required to have their housing element state certified. And this is largely tied to funding. So if you don't have your housing element state certified, you may not be eligible for grants. And it's not just for housing grants, but it's for capital improvement, transportation funds, et cetera. So this is a really important note to make. It's not something that's necessarily easy to do. Cities really have to prove and show their work that they have zoning at the adequate densities to meet the needs. And we also have to identify any constraints that we may have and then have a plan to remove those constraints. And there can be multiple rounds of review by the state before getting that final letter of certification. We do have a letter of certification, of course, so just wanted to mention that. So determining how much housing San Carlos should plan for really begins at the state level. You'll hear this acronym over and over again, if you haven't already, our regional housing needs allocation. That's the amount of housing that we need to provide for within our current housing element cycle. You'll hear that called RENA. Um, so it really, like I said, it really starts at the state level with the Department of Finance. And the Department of Finance determines the state's overall population projections and then works with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, to spread housing across the state and into each region's council of governments. And every region across the state is then assigned a regional housing needs allocation. In San Carlos, we're part of the nine-county Bay Area region and the associate, Association of Bay Area Governments, or ABAG, is our regional council of governments. HCD then works with ABAG to set the region's overall number. So for this housing element cycle, the regional need from 2015 to 2023, again, this is for the nine-county Bay Area region, is about 190,000 new units. And of that amount, about 16,000 was assigned to San Mateo County. And then from that amount, 596 was assigned to the city of San Carlos as its fair share in meeting the overall region's housing needs. So this number, as you can see on the screen, is divided into different income categories. And those are, categories are classified as very low, low, moderate and above moderate units. San Carlos is required to plan for 183 market rate units and with the remaining 413 as below-market rate units. So this slide here shows the city's progress in meeting its RENA. The state requires that we report our progress according to building permits issued. So while there are units that are currently under review and in the planning stage or maybe being reviewed by the building division, they are, and if, but if they haven't received their building permit, um, issued, then they cannot be reflected in this chart. And I just wanted to compare apples to apples to show you our real progress report. This is essentially what is given to the state. And so I wanted to sort of break this down, um, to the council so you can see how we're meeting, um, our needs. So as you can see, the city is, is very, very close to meeting its overall RENA numbers of 596 with the 4,800, uh, new units overall, um, having been received building permits already issued and are currently under construction. Um, so this number, the 480 units does not, would not include, for example, Dragonfly's proposed 68 townhouse project that's located, um, off of Alameda de las Pulgas, nor the adjacent Vista del Grande site. If we were to count both of those together, those two projects would yield more units than the required 596 units you see as our overall RENA number. And this wouldn't take into account the remaining four more years that we have during this renal cycle. So I think it's fair to say that most likely by the time, you know, we do our 2022 count, we're going to be over the 596 in terms of overall units. The area that has been a challenge, um, to meet, and it's not, um, a surprise unfortunately, is the, um, below-market rate portion of our RENA numbers, those 413 units. In terms of the building permits issued, we've only issued 29. However, 40 more units are currently under review and together if we add 49, excuse me, 29 to the 40, we would have a remaining below-market rate unit count of 344. I just wanted to take a minute to clarify that the city's below-market rate housing ordinance is only triggered when a project proposes seven or more units. So the reason the, the, the number is only 29, as you can see here on the screen, it's not for 15% of 480. It's only for, um, projects that are more than seven units. So a lot of the smaller infill projects that we've seen that are proposing five to six units, they're not triggering the BMR ordinance. However, they do still have to pay affordable housing impact fees. So Martin's going to be talking, um, a little bit more about housing affordability and what that means, and also discuss the city's below-market rate ordinance in a little bit more detail. So I'll go ahead and turn that over to Martin.
Good evening, Chair, members of the City Council. Um, so we have discussed income levels in general terms, uh, but what do these households look like? In this slide, above moderate simply means market rate, um, where there is no restriction on incomes that qualify for units. For below-market rate units, there are several categories of affordability. And these are based on household size and area median income, where San Mateo County is the area, which in 2018 was $118,000 and $400 for a household of four. So if a household owns 30% of that median, the household is considered to be of extremely low income. If they earn 50% of the median, they're very low. If they earn 80% of the median, low. And 120% is moderate income. And the exact amount that qualifies a household is based on the number of members in a household and exactly what that household earns. So for example, in this chart, a household of four earning $140,000 would earn, would be able to qualify for a moderate income, uh, BMR unit. So this chart illustrates a 20-year history of housing costs in the city of San Carlos. The red line below shows the maximum price that a household earning the median income could afford with a 20% down payment. And the blue line shows what the median sales price for a home in San Carlos was at a given year. You can see that in 1998, the median household could afford a $300,000 home at a time when the average home cost was about $400,000. A decade later, at the height of the housing bubble, uh, that spread between what the average household could afford and the price of a home increased nearly half a million dollars. After the Great Depression, I'm sorry, the Great Recession, the home values began to sharply increase and by the end of 2017, this spread had reached about $800,000. So as we know, this issue is not just a San Carlos issue, but a regional issue. The peninsula, Marin County, San Francisco County, Santa Clara County all have the most expensive homes in the state. And similarly, these areas and a couple others in Southern California have the highest rents in the state. So we know there is a housing problem and that there's a dire need for more below-market rate units, but, but why aren't there more being built? Well, there are insufficient sources of funding at all levels to support the production of units. Locally, um, we have a, uh, an ordinance whereby it requires seven units as a minimum threshold to trigger the construction of BMR units on site. And as a result, developers end up building larger units, uh, with less than seven units. Also, BMR units, uh, often don't make financial sense for developers and when possible, they opt to pay an in-leave fee rather than building the unit. Developers also often want to negotiate the required levels of affordabilities, uh, that will increase their profitability. So for example, if a developer is required to build moderate units, um, they may seek an alternative, uh, for approval that would build, uh, units of a lower, uh, of a, of a different level of affordability. And also, of course, there are high land costs and construction costs for building up BMR units is the same as building market rate units. So now we'll cover a few, uh, different state-level housing efforts that are currently underway. And Lisa will briefly speak about ADUs.
So, um, as Martin mentioned, we want to talk a little bit about, um, what state-level, um, mandates have occurred. And then also we're going to hear a little bit more about some of the ones that are currently, um, in progress and under, uh, review at the Capitol. So for accessory dwelling units, um, this originally, um, came out as a second dwelling unit ordinance and state law, um, really came into place to start to address this particular housing typology in the year 2003. But then very recently, in 2016 and 2017, at the end of both of those calendar years, state, um, the state passed a series of new laws that would make it much easier for homeowners and builders who wanted to construct ADUs, um, within existing areas zoned for single-family use to do so. So, um, accessory dwelling units, we heard about this earlier, but you know, it's, it's, they're not necessarily classified as below-market, uh, below-market rate housing units. However, we can count them towards RENA. They are a very critical form of infill development, offering housing options that are already within existing neighborhoods. So if you have the space on your lot and, um, you can otherwise meet our zoning standards, you can construct an ADU, um, in the form of an detached ADU, which is our, you know, common traditional form of a, a second dwelling unit. Uh, the unit can also be attached to the primary residence. You can repurpose existing space, perhaps it's an area within your home or within an existing garage. So by right, you can do a garage conversion and provide an ADU, um, on the site. The state basically says that for local agencies have to approve ADUs if they're in area, if they're proposed in areas that are zoned for single-family use and when they can of course meet our, our basic zoning requirements. And ministerially approved means they don't have to go through a discretionary review process, there's no public hearing. Um, applicants for ADUs can go straight to the building division. Those plans are forwarded to planning. We make sure that they otherwise comply with our basic, um, standard zoning regulations. And then they, um, are approved by planning or checked off by planning and then they get their building permit. So this is, um, an area where the state has gotten involved and they set forth a series of laws about allow, further allowing, um, ADUs, um, uh, to be constructed. So in taking, um, a look at that, just for a quick example, um, this is a 30-year history of ADU production, um, in our city, um, from the records that we do have. And you can see that beginning in 1986, um, you know, the number of units that were, that were proposed were very, very low. And there were a little bit of, um, surges here and there, um, throughout, um, over the years. But as you can see, when the state, um, made its recent set of changes in 2017 and 2018, essentially those are the years it became effective, you can see that in 2018, a total of 19 ADUs were proposed. While that number is small, I think it's a result of the changes that the state made. There is a lot of conversation about those recent changes and so a lot of people, um, have been coming forward to inquire more about ADUs. And then of course, we heard earlier from the presenter, um, earlier, uh, on the agenda that when typically for new residents coming in, um, they are very much interested, um, in developing an ADU on the site. And a lot of people are doing it in order to be able to meet their mortgage. So, um, I just wanted to point out, um, that that, or there was a surge, a surge in the production of ADUs and most likely is a result of that state, those state mandates. For this year, um, we have 10 ADUs that haven't been approved so far. And it's not even, we're not at the, you know, end of the half of the year. So most likely continuing with this trend, the number will probably jump above the 2018 number shown here in this particular graph. And then I'm going to turn it over to Martin again to talk about the state density program.
So the state created the state density bonus program, which gives developers an opportunity to build at a greater density than what the code would otherwise allow if they build a certain percentage of BMR units on site. Um, so this chart illustrates how that bonus functions. Um, and essentially if a developer provides, um, a particular, a percentage of a particular level of affordability, then they are eligible for a corresponding percent bonus for their overall project. So as an example, if a builder of a 20-unit project opts to build 15% very-low-income units, so in this chart on the affordable unit percentage, I'll call him here at 15% and they're going to build all very-low units, they're entitled to 35% increase in density. And what this results in is in a, is a total of 27 units that are now permitted on site, inclusive of those three BMR units now restricted to very-low-income households. Um, and with essentially a four market rate unit bonus that they can then, um, you know, sell at market rate or lease at market rate, uh, rates. Along with these density benefits, developers are also entitled under this program to what are called waivers or concessions, um, or incentives, which allow deviations from the development standard. development standards that would allow the project to occur. So, for example, if 20 units would have maxed out the height, they would now be entitled to a development standard that would raise the height limits, or maybe relax parking standards, or reduce setback requirements to make sure that the new 27-unit project would be able to fit on-site and get the project built. Another recently adopted piece of legislation is State Bill 35. This bill states that if cities have not met their RENA requirements at either the market rate or the below-market rate levels, then developers can receive certain benefits. Cities that have not met their RENA levels for market-rate housing must give builders these benefits if the builder will build 10% or more of the units they're proposing as affordable housing. And for cities that have not met their RENA levels for below-market rate housing, they must give these benefits to builders if they build 50% of the units as affordable housing. And so, the benefits essentially are to allow projects to go forth as ministerially reviewed, which give projects an expedited route to approval. They are given an exemption from SEQA, the Environmental Review, and also remove public hearings, which, and this can save the project a lot of time and can reduce the barriers to approval. And this came into effect in January of 2018. It should be noted that since its adoption, very few developers have triggered this law, and San Carlos, which has not met its RENA levels for below-market rate housing, is subject to this. If a developer were to come forth and propose a project that will build 50% affordable housing, they could, in theory, go along this route, but it is unlikely that a project would occur within the city, given the parcel availability. Another piece of legislation which is currently proposed is Senate Bill 50. This bill is currently making its way to the state Capitol, and it stands to have strong impacts on cities throughout the state, including San Carlos. As we've heard today, there is a lot of community concerns surrounding this bill and some support we've heard as well. Within San Carlos, this bill would essentially upzone parcels that are zoned for any type of housing use, as that includes mixed-use housing. If it is located within half a mile of our Caltrain station, or potentially within a quarter-mile of the El Camino Real-San Trans bus stops. This bill, as proposed, would reduce parking requirements, would waive controls of density, and increase height limits, up to 55 feet within a quarter-mile of the Caltrain stop and 45 feet within a quarter-mile of the San Trans bus stops along El Camino Real. Parcels, including those that are currently zoned for single-family use, would be eligible to be redeveloped into more intense residential uses, up to five stories near the Caltrain station. Projects would still have to build the 15% BMR required by the city code. Additionally, no parcels that have had tenants or rental units within the last seven years would be eligible under this legislation. The city is closely tracking this bill, and will keep this council informed as it progresses through the Capitol. At the local level, the city has adopted a residential development BMR program, which requires developers of residential multifamily projects to either build BMR units on-site or to contribute funds to an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The ordinance applies these requirements on both ownership projects, condominiums, and rental projects, apartments. For condo projects, those that will build seven or more units must build 15% as BMR units on-site, 10% restricted to moderate-income households, and 5% restricted to low-income households. Projects of less than seven units must pay an in lieu fee or may opt to build a BMR unit on-site instead of paying that fee. For apartment projects, developers are required to pay an impact fee for each unit constructed. However, builders may opt to build BMR units on-site instead of paying the fee. 977 Laurel Street, which recently finished construction and began lease-up, opted for this type of approach to meeting its BMR ordinance requirements by building a BMR unit on-site for rental rather than paying a significant fee. The BMR ordinance provides a series of alternatives that builders may request to meet their requirements. Any requested alternative must be approved by the first approval body for a project application, which is typically the Planning Commission. And these alternatives that the ordinance provides include the following: one is increasing the total number of bedrooms in a BMR unit, but getting a reduction in, getting fewer units actually built within that project. Second is to restrict BMR units to deeper levels of affordability than required, so building perhaps one very low-income unit versus two moderate-income units, and that would get you a reduction in the total number of units that should be constructed. Three is to build units off-site from the project that's being proposed, but within city limits. Four, rental developers could build units on-site in lieu of having to make a fee payment. Fifth is to preserve historically significant structures for deviations from the requirements of the code. Sixth, to rent BMR units to BMR households in for-sale condominium developments, so if a condo developer would rather rent the unit for a fixed period of time, typically 45 or 55 units. And seventh is to pay in lieu fees instead of building units, which would be deposited into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The last option here is a combination of the aforementioned. Additionally, within the last few years, the city has also adopted a commercial development linkage fee program, and this program charges developers of certain types of commercial project a fair share contribution per square-foot fee to be deposited into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. These fees were determined by an extra study conducted by the city's economics consultant and was adopted by the City Council by resolution. Currently, the fees are set at $5 for retail space, restaurant space, and personal service space, $10 per square foot for hotel space, and $20 per square foot for office, medical office, or research and development space. These fees are only applicable to projects that create a net new 5,000 square feet of space or more. So, what are the results of some of these programs? To date, these programs have built 115 BMR units, and an additional 45 BMR units are currently in the development pipeline, that is, projects that have either received approval or are under planning review. This number differs slightly from, has been reported to the state's Housing Department as RENA progress. The 29 units that were reported have received building permits, but additional ones are under review of some sort. Additionally, the city currently holds about $10 million in housing funds and expects to receive an additional $10 million in the near future from large development projects, which would also be deposited into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This chart illustrates where in the city BMR units are currently located. There are 21 units at San Carlos Elm Senior Living Facility, 20 units at Tressal Apartments, 17 at 1001 Laurel Street, and several others mostly near the downtown core of the city. Additionally, six development projects are expected to be built, sorry, six development projects are expected to build an additional 45 units throughout the city. One forthcoming project that will build a significant number of BMR units is the 817 Walnut Project, which will be heard by the Planning Commission this month for consideration. This project plans to build 24 studio apartments, which would be 100% affordable. Currently, there is a seven-unit city-owned multifamily building on-site, and if approved, the city would partner with Charities Housing, an nonprofit affordable housing developer, and contribute about $6 million from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, along with a long-term lease for the land. The units would be restricted to BMR households at the deepest levels of affordability, which are the most difficult categories to provide units to. Additionally, the city has been engaging with another affordable housing nonprofit developer, which we've heard from today, Hip Housing. We are exploring the potential to redevelop their facility at Cherry Street to build a 30-unit project there. The unit mix would be aimed at building family housing, so larger units, and funds would go towards this project from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The city maintains a BMR waitlist from which households are placed into BMR units as they become available. Currently, the waitlist is at about 1,200 households. A majority of these waitlistees have joined the list in the last two years, and this significant spike may be attributed to the city's recent marketing efforts to inform the community of the existence of the list and increasing knowledge about the BMR program as a whole, as well as a newly adopted online application system. The waitlist functions on a first-come, first-served basis, with residents and workers of San Carlos receiving a priority, and there are currently about 500 members on the list with this status. In addition, in addition to the worker and resident preference, the city also has a $350,000 asset limit cap, which is exclusive of retirement accounts. The city also provides grants to nonprofit groups that support affordable housing efforts on an annual basis. In the current fiscal year, the city awarded a total of $105,000 in funding to seven organizations out of a total of $144,000 that had been requested through a notice of funding availability A bit about these different organizations that we support. Samaritan House provides emergency and transitional housing. The Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities assists disabled households remaining in their homes by providing necessary home modifications. Rebuilding Together Peninsula Peninsula preserves and improves housing through home repairs for low-income households. Parka provides affordable housing and independent living skills training for San Carlsans with developmental disabilities. Hip Housing, as we heard today, provides affordable housing and runs a home-sharing program in San Carlos. Life Moves provides shelter and supportive services for homeless families, and Call Primrose assists housing burden families by providing free groceries on a weekly basis. As we also heard earlier today, there are a few regional and county-level housing efforts underway. The CASA Compact, which is a proposed set of policy recommendations, which was issued by a task force convened by the regional Bay Area government and Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and that essentially aims to set the groundwork for the adoption of future legislation that would impact cities around the Bay Area. The compact is structured around these 10 elements, including recommendation for Bay Area-wide legislation, such as adopting a form of rent control by setting a cap on all rental increases annually, by adopting reforms to housing approval processes, and by upzoning parcels near transit corridors up to 55 feet or 75 feet if combined with the state density bonus. Another proposed piece of legislation is AB 738, which would enable San Mateo County jurisdictions to partner together in an effort to build BMR housing across city limits to facilitate the meeting of RENA requirements. In essence, this would work by having one city be the host of a BMR development project that would contribute a combination of land and financial assistance, and another city would provide financial assistance, with each city receiving a RENA credit. This slide illustrates that by showing how it could be played out. If City A donates $200,000 in funds, plus a donation of a city-owned parcel, and City B contributed $500,000 from their Housing Trust Fund, and together, these $1 million facilitated the construction of 70 affordable homes, City A would receive 35 units, credit for 35 units towards RENA, and City B would also receive that same share.
Martin and Al, before we proceed, I want to do, just kind of check in with my colleagues. I think we all know, going into this, this is a huge topic, this is why it's a strategic focus for the council, not something we planned on acting on and resolving tonight. But I do want to make sure that if there are both questions on the materials, material that we've heard so far, and more importantly, specific things that council members want to get out in front of the dais about near-term actions, and again, I think there will be plenty of longer-term actions that we are going to want to undertake, I want to make sure we have time for that, because it's after 10 o'clock now, and I can frankly, sort of sense, starting to sense eyes starting to glaze over a little bit. Not with you guys, I know you guys could continue until about 4 o'clock in the morning, but that's okay. So, how do you folks feel? You want to continue with the presentation, is you want to take a, not a break, but sort of step back and ask questions, what we heard so far, start having a little bit of discussion, talk about what we want to do, next steps in this long-term process? What's your pleasure?
Well, a couple things. I have some questions, none that are, that can't wait, but I guess if we could just take a leap forward for a second, supposing we get through all this tonight and we get all our questions answered, what happens next? What's the next step?
That's part of the presentation. But...
At the end, you asked for direction.
And just really quickly, while we plan on updating our housing element, that's something we have to do in the next year or two, this is something that's going to come before you later this evening, and it's your strategic objectives that you'll be considering. One of the things that we heard at the retreat that you had is that you'd like to take a look at our general plan and our zoning to see if there's areas in the community that can provide greater density, more housing units. What you see on the right there is an example of where, what we have been talking about a little bit tonight. That blue area is a development potential of a residential project that was just approved by the Planning Commission, and the developer chose to build much less than the development potential of that lot. And so, this is something, this is a big ticket item that the council has suggested you want to look into in the next year or so, and that is part of your strategic objectives. It's a major undertaking where we would look at all the general plan and the zoning and constraints and opportunities within the transit-oriented development areas that we discussed earlier, and some other constraints. There's some other things that we'd like to do, we're a pilot program for BMR waitlist, 817 and the Cherry Street that we've talked about are projects that are coming forward. We've been talking to the council about some of these, and then, so those are some of our next steps, and those are some of the big things. And so, what we have here is some suggestions for next steps, for you to kind of kick off the discussion this evening, and it goes from minor changes to the strongest changes. And that last one that I talked about was, are really some of the strongest changes you can make, a big, big undertaking, and then, like, you could change the ADU ordinance and things like that. So, we have a number of next steps that are lined up for you for consideration.
If I may interject, because I think that's a really good question, Ron, I actually think there's a unspecified here, and I wouldn't expect staff to necessarily bring this forward, that's for the council to talk about what it wants to do, next steps. I mean, because ultimately, we're the source of direction for what happens and within the confines of state and federal law, and this is such a big topic that, I know, I'm sure everybody has, a number of things they'd like to toss out there to possibly, possibly get focused on. But in any event, as I said, I'd like to, I'd like to just get a sense from my colleagues about what you'd like to do tonight. I mean, Al just, Al just very cleverly did, and very expeditiously, I guess is probably an even better word, finished the presentation, and I give you kudos for doing that. But the, we heard a number of things from community members tonight, we've all talked about this before, I know we all have different feelings about this topic. So, what do we want to do next?
I think, I mean, I know we've got, I mean, I have a page full of questions and thoughts, and I'm sure others do as well, and I guess just trying to understand sort of the rest in that we have one other item that we have to look at and how...
Forgot to mention, we were going to postpone that one.
Oh, okay. That was my question, can we postpone that one? That would...
Done.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm happy to go, I mean, while it's fresh to have and have a discussion for a while, I don't know that I want to be here till midnight, but I mean, if we could maybe go to 11 and kind of call it at that point, I'd be comfortable with that, knowing that we would be done at that point.
Is that reasonable?
Yes.
I'd like to ask one other thing for my colleagues to consider, and I know we've all acknowledged this is a long-term effort, and it's going to come back before us multiple times. For whatever reason, I personally feel like we're starting to actually build some momentum on this issue that we haven't had in a long time, and so, I'd like to see if there's support for making sure that we manage the forward agenda so that this thing, that, I doubt we're going to have the totality of our discussion tonight by 11 o'clock. I'd like to make sure that it comes back quickly to us, not with another staff presentation, but sort of with taking off from here about, okay, we've had a chance to digest the staff presentation, we've asked staff offline more questions, now we want to actually have a discussion.
I'd be in favor of that.
Yes.
All right, good, then we will do that, too.
So, excuse me, Mark.
Sure.
Would we just call this study session part two and sort of pick up where we left off?
That's what I was, yeah, that's a good way of looking at it. Study session part two.
No, I'm happy, I'm fine with that.
All right, then I think maybe let's, let's do, let's spend some time asking questions. I guess, I had a handful of things personally that I thought were reasonably straightforward kind of potential, if not action items, not for tonight, obviously, but things to have staff study and bring back to us that I'd like to bring up, and if other people have things like that, I'd like to leave some time for that as well. Several companies that I worked at in my private sector career had this, had the same mantra that in their... mantra that in their mission statements, they were, "We have a bias for action." And I guess that's sort of embedded in my psyche. I like to keep us moving forward. So why don't we ask some, why don't we ask questions and then leave some time for some straightforward or potential near-term action kinds of things?
Before we do that, can I just make a motion that we extend the meeting till 11:00 PM?
That'd probably be a good idea, since we're supposed to technically start at 10:30.
Oh, second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Crystal, would you call, well, Craig, do we have to do this by? All in favor of extending the meeting to 11:00?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Go. Good. So who would like to start with questions? I have a bunch of, oh, okay, Laura.
So the community input was very helpful, a lot of stories from across a lot of different perspectives and stakeholders, which I really appreciated. The presentation by staff was also very helpful, so thank you for that. My big takeaway from this is that, is kind of two things. One is, San Carlos is building more homes against our general plan, and that's underway. But we're, there's a huge gap in the, across the different income level affordability. And I guess what I would like to hear from staff is, what is, you know, what is preventing that from happening in a simple statement, right? Because we can build, and then the other piece to this is the survey that we received still shows the broader community is concerned about development in San Carlos. So I feel like while the group here tonight was in favor of it for the most part, there's still a disconnect with a larger part of the community. So I know we have some conversations ongoing about community engagement, but I think that's also a really key component of this. So, but the first question is really, my biggest concern at the moment from what I'm seeing is this, building a lot of not very affordable housing. So what are the key drivers with the balance, and what can we...
There's two or three things that are, that stand out to us in, that can be done. One is what we're seeing, and we noted in the presentation, is that developers don't want to build below-market-rate housing. They only do it because cities require them to do it. It doesn't make sense sometimes financially. So what they're doing is they're skirting our below-market-rate ordinance. They're building below the density that would trigger our ordinance for the construction and, you know, of these units. So one issue would be, should the city, and I think it might be up there somewhere, should the city make it so that the developers have to build a minimum density, or you have to build at least those seven units? If you can build 10, then you got to get to that number of BMR, or you have to provide those BMR units in your development project. And right now, we're encouraging that very strongly in our community, and we have strong legal footing to do that, but it doesn't say they have to do it in our current ordinances. And so that's an area that is a huge, you know, hole in what we have on the books.
Okay. And just a quick follow-up question. What is the minimum square footage requirement we have for dwelling, let's say for one person? Do we have something in our ordinance that there's a certain square footage that's required?
No. Yeah, it's a building code, and I mean, we're allowing, we would allow for the construction of 300-square-foot units, which is a very small studio. So pretty much as small as you could develop, we would currently allow it in our code.
May I build on your question? Because I just want to make sure I understood what you said, Al. So, and this may actually be a great question, too. Would we be able to establish a BMR requirement that basically looks to what could be built on the site as opposed to what is actually being proposed? In other words, that would, that would remove the incentive for a developer to do something smaller, and basically say, well, build whatever size you like, but if you could have built X units and we would have gotten four BMR units out of it, you still got to give us four BMR units?
Yes, you can do things like that.
We can do that.
I, I think we have, I mean, we have wide discretion in our zoning, but I'd need to study that for you. I don't, I don't have a precise answer tonight.
That can be a good thing to follow up on. Not that I don't doubt you, it's just that it's sort of a legal question.
And one approach might be a minimum density. Some cities say you have to have a minimum density. Right now, we just have maximums. So that would be a threshold the city could do. And another would be, right now, we only require 15%. The city could consider, or the council could consider, a higher percentage of BMR units as well. So those are a couple of things one of the council members asked about.
Okay. Sarah?
Thank you, Mark. I have a few questions. So on the RENA numbers, I see that in 2017, only two BMR units were constructed, and zero in 2018. So I have two questions regarding that. If we were to meet our total RENA allocation, the 596, but most of that was BM, most of it was market rate, does that count as meeting RENA standards, or do we have to meet each bucket?
The short answer is each bucket. And one of the things I just wanted to mention that may be helpful, just to sort of maybe explain the story of where we are. So we have 183 market-rate units, and then there are 413. So that's quite a bit more than the market rate. And in, in going back to how the RENA numbers are developed, and this would even be another discussion where I would probably want some from ABAG to explain this to the council, but that 413 number is actually kind of like an accumulation. A lot of cities haven't been building the below-market-rate numbers. So the makeup of that number is starting to lean more and heavier towards the below-market-rate unit side. So we're going to meet our overall, but the state is going to be looking at whether or not we've met each income category as well. And as Martin just discussed, there is supporting state legislation that basically says, if you haven't met your below-market-rate number, then if anyone should come forward with 50% or more of the units as affordable, it has to go through a ministerial process and OCEQA. So that's the state sort of assisting, if you will.
Thank you. So speaking of that, because there are all these incentives out there, SB 35, and we had the bonus units that you mentioned, if BMR units are constructed, but it doesn't appear like developers are using any of those tools in the toolkit that we're trying to use to incentivize development of BMR units. So I appreciate these policy questions, because it's something that I've been thinking about. And so that leads me to my question about in-lu fees, because I personally would like to do away with that option. I think that we need to make it crystal clear to developers...
Here.
I'm sorry?
I was doing something rude. I said, "Here, here."
Oh. Thought you were giving me my two-minute warning, Mark. I'd like to make it crystal clear that writing the check is no longer an option, and we really need the BMR units to be constructed. So my question is, right now, we have the inclusionary policy for sale units, right? But we do still allow in-lu fees as well with units for sale, and I also have the same question for rental units.
Yeah, so our BMR code is pretty friendly to alternatives. If you can, that long list of alternatives that were presented, essentially, if you can make your case for the first approval, a lot of you can come to the Planning Commission and say, "This is my BMR plan, though I'm required to build these units. I either, if I did it, it would be economically infeasible, or it would be, you know, detrimental to my return on my investment, and here's the study that I've commissioned." The Planning Commission could, in theory, grant the developer the right to build the in-lu fee. So the onus would be on the developer to prove that projects in the past have received those benefits. And I think that the last time that happened, it was a totally different situation in the housing world. But that is to say that our BMR ordinance hasn't been amended substantially in recent years, and that's one of the requested policy directions for whether we should review the alternatives currently available, and whether things like in-lu fees might be removed as an alternative or drastically changed only for perhaps maybe projects under certain, maybe two units, or whatever it may be. We could study that to figure out what the correct set of alternatives would be best suited for the community at this time.
And that's all legal? We're in solid footing there with taking that option away? Okay.
Yeah, there's been a recent case that changed the rules on rental housing.
Okay. Thank you.
Adam?
Thank you. So I guess I'd agree with Sarah on your BMR stuff, and Mark, I guess what I would, I think you've got both the minor, the other different changes that you've listed in the policy question. I just think we should first look at our entire BMR ordinance and look at the whole thing and try to see where we need to make some changes. I certainly like the idea of having a minimum number of BMR units regardless of size, and maybe the square footage is the way to look at it versus number of units. So if you're building over, you know, something that's, you know, 2,000 square feet, you got to, or whatever, we can figure out what the right number is, 5,000, versus saying if you're going to build two units, one's got to be BMR. We can, I think a square footage option might be an easier way to implement. And I'd certainly want to get rid of the, look at removing some of the alternatives and requiring, get rid of the in-lu fees. I guess one question I had is with the new, on the ADU question, how does that get impacted by our new housing size rules that we put in place? And does that impact our ability to encourage more ADUs? Because we've now, you know, limited the size of some of the houses that we can have in our parcels.
Absolutely. So that is a policy question that's on the table when we start to look at updating our ADU ordinance. Through the single-family house size study, the council adopted a new maximum floor area. And floor area, as it's defined and described in the zoning ordinance, would also apply. So it's all livable, all habitable space. So an ADU would fall within that definition of the max floor area. So come May 10th, when the new standards go into place, that will be a new, you know, that will also apply to ADUs, to answer your question. But we do have the ability to change it. We can say the ADUs could be exempt from the max floor area, whether 100% or a certain percentage of the size. So that's something that we'd want to take a look at. And I'm glad you're, the council is actually bringing it up, because as we start to embark on this ADU ordinance, it would be helpful for staff to kind of look at, you know, from a policy perspective, how much do we really want to incentivize ADUs? And that's the first bullet under minor changes. So overall, will we be looking at removing all potential constraints towards the production of ADUs? So maybe that was a long answer, but yes, that's a policy question for the council.
And I'm assuming that, you know, we've seen some increase in the request for ADUs that could be because of the changes coming in on the zoning as well, right, and the housing sizes. So that increase that you've seen right now could be related to that, and it'd be interesting to see sort of post-May if that drops off again at that point.
I will share that some folks have asked the question, "Well, I want to do an ADU. Am I going to be subject to the max floor area?" And staff has responded, yes, come May 10th, you would be. So there's been a little bit of activity in getting the ADUs submitted now before that standard would take effect.
Makes sense that we should look at that. And then I had one, can you, Lisa, what does TDM stand for?
Transportation Demand Management.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That was easy.
And thank you for invoking the Grisilli rule. No acronyms.
I need my little timer. And then the one question I do, you mentioned you could apply for in-lu, park, pay, park-in-lu fees for certain assessment zones. Do you know, what, how much is the fee that we get to that? You talked about housing units being, or parking for a developer being $50,000. So how are they, how much are they getting, what's the difference in that?
Martin may have to help me out on this, from what you remember, but essentially, it's approximately 17,000 units per parking space. That's what our, that's what our current...
$17,000?
$17,000 per parking space. That is our current in-lu fee for a parking space under that particular scenario. And the history behind that number, behind that particular fee, comes from a prior resolution which set the fee into place. And then further language went into that resolution to say that it could be adjusted per cost of living. And so if we do the math, that's how we wind up at the 17,000. So council by resolution could amend the parking in-lu fee amount. And I believe that may have been a discussion that took place in the prior years with our downtown parking study and the different options the council could take. Do you want to add anything to that?
That's right. And we have had a new study conducted to get that. We were just increasing it by cost of living, and so that was no longer adequate for market conditions. So we've had a new study conducted that will set a new market correct level for that. That will come before the council for approval as part of a new resolution, right?
I have more questions, but I will let others jump in for a while.
Thanks. Yeah, actually, I have one question I'm going to ask, but I want to share an idea that Ron mentioned to me a few minutes ago, to see if the dais is willing to follow this. One other way of doing this, because I think we all have a bunch of questions, and probably if it wasn't 10:30 at night, we'd have even more, and when we reflect on this a little bit, we'll have more. We could, Jeff, if this would work for staff, why couldn't we submit the questions offline to staff, basically kind of like what we do with the mini-retreats, and have you guys organize them, summarize them, and bring back answers the next time we continue this discussion?
We wouldn't have any problem with that at all.
Okay. Because that would, that would give people a chance to reflect on stuff and ask further questions, and we wouldn't have to take the time to vocalize them all. We'd lose the interaction amongst ourselves, but we'd get that back when we hear the, we hear the answers coming back. So I appreciate, Ron, you mentioning that. I think it's a good idea. And one question I did say I wanted to ask of a very general nature, and this is probably an Al and maybe Greg question. I not, I was not involved with the amendment of, the amendment process for the general plan. I know that even on the periphery, it was kind of a major, major undertaking, took a lot of staff resources, community resources. So it's not something one does lightly. What's involved with changing merely a part of the plan? Like, for example, if we were to talk about some aspect of housing, specifically as it relates to multifamily housing, or some aspect of commercial development as it related to just commercial development in a section of town? Is that equally involved in time-consuming, or, I know it takes time and effort, but is it something that one could reasonably expect to do more expeditiously than an entire rework? And can you separate things that way?
It really depends on how large an area it is and what you're talking about. So there are ranges, you know? We did the whole general plan back in 2009, but even with what is in the strategic vision that you've shared with us, that is a major undertaking, and it would require updating of our entire EIR and SEQA, a lot of analysis, background investigation, public meetings, consultant time, staff time. So that one is the big, the big one. Could you do something smaller? Yes, and you could do it more expeditiously. For instance, just something that we recently discovered at, in South Laurel, let's, we were looking at height in the South Laurel area because people were concerned about the three- and four-story developments going there. And what we found out about that is that the maximum density there is 20 units to the acre along there. And what we also discovered is that within the envelope that you could build, if the density was just a little higher, you could, you know, build one-third more units, let's say, in the same envelope. So you wouldn't have to impact the height and everything. You could actually just upgrade the density and build smaller, more smaller units. And so that's something that you could do, like in a very focused area, that would be much faster and more maybe impactful in the near term.
Okay. Thank you. That helps. Greg, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, that's, actually, I was thinking the same thing about the EIR on the big-picture change, but as long as it's consistent with the zoning, you can do a lot of zoning changes as long as it's consistent with the general plan, and I think what Al's describing is something that would be potentially consistent with the general plan, so you can go straight to a zoning change.
It's changing the general plan itself, or even elements of it that start becoming more complex.
And the thresholds of significance for the changes, does that trigger the need to do an amendment to the EIR or a new EIR?
Okay. Thank you. Laura, I see that you have your light on.
Yeah, so, so one of the comments that one of the residents made was about the... Yeah, so, so one of the comments that one of the residents made was about the, the amount of office space that's being built. And we've had this conversation in the past when I've been trying to better understand the dynamics of what's happening in our community with development. And my understanding is that from a ROI perspective, office space basically trumps the building of retail space, which the ROI on retail space exceeds that of housing, right? So I guess when I look at it, if that's true, right, it's no wonder that we see a lot of office space going in up and down the peninsula, but really a dearth of, of, you know, housing projects. So what I'm wondering about is, you know, what can we do to incentivize developers to move and migrate more towards housing projects as opposed to commercial projects, right? Because everything that I'm hearing is that, you know, we, we need housing, right? So the economic piece of it, how do we incentivize that and motivate that? Has staff given to any thought around our policies around that and how we can motivate?
Well, most recently, the city has, and we didn't do this before, is that we, the council said that those developments must pay their fair share toward housing. And we never did that before. We were one of the first cities in the county and, you know, one of the few cities in the county that adopted this commercial linkage fee. And in fact, it's so new that we haven't received a lot of funds from it, but as Martin mentioned, we, we anticipate $10 million that could go toward whatever the council wants to do with it, either build units or, or do some other things with it. So that was a huge moment for the city of San Carlos to take that, to get out in front of that issue. So that, that was a big one. Because again, that's $20, $20 a foot for new development. So that was a big thing. To ask developers to actually build those units in your community is a different conversation. And it's something that we would need to explore, what the ramifications are of that. And, and right off the top of my head, I don't know of cities that do that, but it's something we could certainly look at. That would be a big thing. A third sort of rail on this thing are, is somewhat related to that. What community benefits could developers provide that do benefit people who live here already and even low-income people or people who don't have access to daycare or other services associated with, you know, income levels? So those might be some things that you could look at. That would be, we do have a clear path for those things.
Al, I'd be interested in your take in, in terms of the role the city might play in terms of property acquisition, putting, assembling larger parcels that could then be sold to developers for, for projects, not unlike what we did with the hotel. Is that something that would be a benefit to the development community as well?
Yes. And, I mean, the city can do that, as you, as you know. So you could take those funds that you accumulate from these office developments and acquire property around town in very focused locations that are close to transit and close to services. That would make it very highly desirable to folks of lower incomes that don't have cars and things like that. You could, so yes, that, that is something that is, is exciting and, and something that cities can take the lead on and, and I think we have the expertise to do that. If the council wanted to, to do more of that, we could take those funds and, and acquire. You can acquire existing units and turn them into, you can acquire an apartment building and turn it into affordable housing. That's something else that the council could consider.
So with this land acquisition idea, are there, when I look at the zoning map that you shared with us, I'm not really seeing an intuitive spot within San Carlos as it's currently zoned. Are there, you have a, you have a, where?
I don't know what to say. There are, there are several of them, actually.
So, so could you tell me a little bit more about where these are, these spots are? Because I, because I'm hearing that there's no more meaningful land left for development and it's all redevelopment and infill and the plots are small.
So we have done studies of this and we did a number of opportunity site analyses of downtown area within a quarter and a half mile of the train station and other transit. And we did find several properties that would be good for affordable housing or mixed-use developments in the community. It's something that we haven't shared with the new council, but it's something that we could certainly share if the city manager thought it was a good idea, we could do it through subcommittees and things like that and bring people up to speed. There are lots of properties in the, in, within walking distance of transit that the city could partner with an affordable housing developer or go it alone. So there are lots of opportunities. It requires creativity and some, and thoughtful approach, but yes, that is a, is a very distinct opportunity. And we can, again, share that information with the, the council.
Sarah.
I have a follow-up question to that, Al, actually. I'm glad we touched, touched on that topic. I learned about, in Redwood City, I think, that they did a project where they used a large development and the commercial linkage fees that were obtained from that development. The developer was required to work with a partner that was looking for funding and fund a specific project. Is that something that we've considered for San Carlos, is actually making that link? And, you know, maybe there are projects kind of in the wings waiting for funding that, that could, you know, make it happen?
No, we, we haven't done that with office or commercial development projects, but that, again, that's a policy direction that we could take a look at. We can see what, what Redwood City and other cities are doing and if that's a community benefit the council wants us to look at, we can certainly do that.
I don't know if it would necessarily be a, a separate community benefit, but using the linkage fees directly instead of putting them in, you know, our housing fund?
We could certainly explore that.
Adam.
Must be getting late. So, and, so it sounds like that if we could, it'd be minor to increase the sort of density in some places that are maybe for mixed use or something else right now. And that is your sense, Al, that we would be more attractive to developers, for housing developers at that point, because they can sort of get more out of that piece of property?
Yes.
Okay. And then on the overall zoning changes, though, if we were to take, let's say, part of the industrial area or to say on El Camino, we're gonna change zoning on parts of El Camino to be for multifamily housing. That's a bigger, more difficult change? Or, and what sort of, where would you put that in the, in the scale? And I'm thinking more like El Camino, where, as an example.
So El Camino and that area, kind of that we looked at on the map, the triangular area near downtown, those areas actually already allow for mixed-use development and that kind of thing. And so what you would be looking at is within, you, you do have constraints that are kind of built in. We have height limitation, we have, we do have density limitations. So in those areas, what could the city do to incentivize more units, increase density, reduce zoning requirements so that you get more of those units? So that would be the kind of review of that corridor there that the city would do.
But I'm, I'm thinking also back on Laura's question, if, if the incentive is more to build commercial, how do we either force more housing through some zoning changes or, and maybe the density is one sort of simple way to do that, but I'm, you know, if you rezoned a portion of El Camino that it wasn't just mixed use, it was for multifamily only, with the higher density and everything else, then, you know, you, the developer doesn't have a choice in that matter, right? If they want to go in and do something on a piece of property, they've got to go in and, and, and build housing.
Yes. And it's kind of like that now. So you, you can, you, you can do the housing now, but what I think we don't have, and I think kind of what you're getting at is forcing housing to be developed in this area, right? And, and what we don't have is minimum density. So you don't, the city's kind of just saying, hey, build whatever you want within this maximum. So we don't say, but you have to build 75% of it. So those are some of the things. But to connect sort of the east side commercial industrial zones to housing is kind of, there's a little bit of that, I think you're touching on that just a little bit. We have the commercial linkage fee, we have the idea that maybe commercial developers would be forced to construct housing elsewhere or partner or fund or acquire and those things. That's, those are areas that we don't have. One of the things that, that we didn't talk about in the objective is to rezone commercial industrial land for, to residential.
Okay, thank you. The, I actually, this is a great conversation, which I definitely want to have us continue. And in that specific regard, I wanted to see how the DIAS felt about this. I just want to, to me, I would actually like this discussion to be continued at our very next council meeting, even if, even if we have to ask staff to kind of schedule things around to make sure it fits, because again, I hate to lose the momentum and sort of growing awareness of trade-offs and issues. Is that reasonably supported by the DIAS?
I guess my only question is, I don't remember what's on the next agenda, if it's, we've got things that are time-sensitive, that's the only thing I'd want to just make sure-
That was my question.
We can manage. I mean, this is time-sensitive too, from, from a standpoint.
It's probably, it'd probably be useful to hear from the city manager about that, but in general, I mean, to me, that's a matter of, of sort of making it work. I mean, if, because remember, it's up to us, it's up to us if we decide we want to have an additional meeting shoehorned in someplace because we want to talk about it, or we want to talk about something else that got pushed off, okay?
We can absolutely do that. It may result in us putting a few more sort of what we may call mid-level items onto the consent calendar because we need to move them through. You know, certainly myself and staff can be available to meet with council in advance of the next agenda so we can go through some of those things and, and make sure you're comfortable with some other stuff if we have to kind of push that in, onto consent. But we can, we can certainly continue this item at our next council meeting. You know, it's, it's been clear right from the beginning with, with this new city council that this is a major issue and, and it's exciting to hear the momentum. We're excited, we'd, we'd like to continue this conversation too and kind of get cracking.
Yeah. No, good, I'm glad to hear that. That brings me to something I want to, to honor the 11 o'clock extension that we did, but I want to-
Mayor, oh, are you moving to a new topic?
No.
Oh, because I want to wrap up, maybe another two minutes, a little time?
Uh, no, not tonight, sorry. The, but again, as I mentioned earlier, I don't know if you're here, please also feel free to get, we're gonna have this item on the next agenda and you can also contact us individually offline outside of the meeting. So I'm, I'm not trying to stop your input, I'm just trying to ma-
I'm just gonna follow up, sorry.
I just want to, I just want to manage the time tonight, so thank you, sir. The, an issue I want to make sure that we at least, if not do something about tonight, at least consciously think that we don't want to do something about tonight. A number of speakers brought up the issue of the interaction of what we're talking about with SB 50, okay? And in fact, I think there were a couple of speakers who specifically called for the council to take a position on SB 50 and clarify for the community where we are. I'm not saying I necessarily want to, want to do that, but I will be, I, I think it would be remiss if we didn't consider that all of the things that we've been touching, starting to touch on here in the last hour, the, the political process of trying to achieve things there could be significantly complicated if you could imagine an uproar growing in the community of sort of having to fight against SB 50 and that sort of sucks the focus of all the housing discussion onto that. And that, to me, is an argument for why the council might want to think about taking some position on it, not tonight because it's not an action item. But what I was specifically thinking of is whether we ought to task either the housing subcommittee or, we have a communications subcommittee too, right? As I recall. With, with, working with staff to draft, maybe even a letter that we sent to Senator Weiner and send to various elected officials saying, here's our, sort of in general, our views and reactions, reactions to stuff. And again, that's not a really well-formed idea, that's part of what we'd be assigning some people to work on and bring it back to us. The basic question is, having heard this call from, from members of the community, and I can assure you it's not just the people who showed up here tonight, do we want to do anything about that? Do we want to sort of start taking some steps on that?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, Millbrae's done it already. They've sent one. And I think maybe at least one other city in the county has done it. Do you know, Jeff?
Not off the top of my head, all the cities, but I, I know multiple cities have, have taken a position on-
Burlingame discussed it, I believe, at their last city council meeting, it was reported in Daily Journal.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of maybe having our, in fact, there's a Housing Subcommittee meeting in a couple of days. I'm wondering if we could chat about that, at that meeting.
Yeah, that was gonna be my recommendation.
Yeah. Okay.
And as long as we're talking about this, and I guess, Greg, this falls within the context of the discussion topic, right? Housing?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I don't need to ask you, I know you'll leap in if I start saying something I'm not supposed to. I, I just wanted to say and, and see what other personal views people may have, but I want to go on record here, as I've, I've told, in fact, Sandy Althouse and Josh, her husband, when I met with them privately. I really don't like the concept in Senator Weiner's proposed legislation, which basically steamrollers, local, steamrolls, local control. On the other hand, personally, I would, I would not be in favor of sending a letter that basically just said that without also saying something to the effect of, I don't mind being held accountable, strictly accountable, I don't mind being punished by the state if we don't do what you think we need to do, but just please leave it up to us to decide where we do it, okay? And, you know, so in other words, not to tell them that local control means get out of this entire business, it's kind of like, do whatever you need to do, but leave us the authority to be held accountable for what you want us to do, not tell us how to do it. Anyway, that's where I come from.
I, I think that's the discussion that we have when, you know, it's basically what we want to see in a letter. And I think that's what, we'll, we'll chat about that on Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, just to add to that, I think it would be helpful for us to get some insight into what the economic impact would be on San Carlos if SB 50 were to be passed.
Fair enough. All right. Any other, I, just to remind folks, what we're all gonna do is we're gonna submit all of the questions that we have and other ones that we think of to staff so that, quickly so that they can incorporate them into answering them at the next council meeting when we'll bring this topic back for further discussion.
Just one quick-
Yeah, go ahead.
I've got nine minutes now to have the floor.
Actually, not, we still have a few other things to deal with, but they're all administrative.
I just want to thank Martin and Lisa and Al for their presentation. And I, and I would agree that the, the brochure that came out on the housing was, was great and really well done and thank you for doing that.
Awesome.
Really well done. And I think at some point, to me, it almost seems like we should also try in, in, at the same, concurrently try to think about it, some sort of more town hall around housing as well versus just us talking here. Something that, you know, we can reach out to more residents and do that, talk about SB 50, CASA, you know, and some of the things that we're talking about. We have some great data and a great story to tell, and there's more to do, but I think it would be a useful sort of approach as part of this whole process.
Yeah. Adam, I concur with that. I think community engagement would be really important and, again, going, just because this is such a binary issue, I'm actually, I actually have people who stop me in the street and tell me to stop development, they just don't want anybody else here. That if we kind of look at the model that was used for the pedestrian and sidewalk and bicycle safety program where there was an opportunity for voices to be heard and data presented to the community for them to respond to, I thought that was really a remarkable way to do it. So we get the dialogue as opposed to, you know, kind of get, you know, we need to hear what people have to say about it, right?
I think that sounds, Adam, I think your idea, I, I think we'd have to scope out exactly how we were gonna, or, you know, more precision of how we were gonna do that, but I think it's an excellent idea and we should definitely discuss that further. And I also appreciate your comments about the work staff has done, because that was actually the, related to the comment I wanted to make, which is, I, I honestly don't know whether staff at all feels a little bit of what I'm gonna talk about here. It would not, it would hardly be surprising for staff faced with a relatively significant shift in prioritization by the council to sort of feel a little bit defensive. shift in prioritization by the council to sort of feel a little bit defensive. Okay? And I just want you guys to know that I don't want you to feel defensive about this at all. I actually really enjoyed hearing about some of your out-of-the-box ideas on things that we could do to address the issue. Because this has always been a matter, whether it's prioritizing or figuring out what we're going to do, we have to tell you what we want you to do. Okay? I actually am very confident that there's nothing we could think of to do that you guys couldn't figure out how to do. Okay? But we have to, in representing the community and in having the discussions with community and whatnot, we have to figure out what to tell you. And I really respect the work that you did in the presentation here tonight, and, you know, I think it's great that we're finally paying some significant attention to this. Because, you know, as I said earlier, I, just speaking for myself, I don't really want to live in a community where it's nothing but old, rich guys like Ron and I who don't have young kids anymore. Okay?
Who are you calling rich?
Sorry about that.
I accept the old part.
Okay, there you go. All right, all right, I'll amend my comment. Old guys without kids. Because I don't, I just think communities that are more broadly based and are more diverse are just more exciting and healthy communities. So I'm glad to see we're working on that. All right, so more to be worked on on this. We're going to, we moved off the item on the strategic plan. Not that that's not important, but just in terms of time. So next item is council reflections and agenda setting. I have one agenda topic to propose, but are, who has things they want to bring up?
I'd like to bring something up. So there's been some discussion, and I've received some feedback around questions people have in the community around the proposed community foundation, and speculation can often get ahead of reality. And given the fact that this is a new council and that idea was initiated by the previous council, I thought it would be helpful for us to come together and have a conversation about, you know, what is the need for that and what do we hope to get out of it? Simply because if the idea is that it would be funded, you know, with the $2 million from PG&E settlement, that's a significant sum. And I think we just, I would like for us to just do diligence on that in advance of any recommendation coming or proposal coming from the community.
I don't think it's a bad idea, although I will say, I'm actually having coffee with Cameron to talk about just that in a couple of weeks. And so because he is involved in this, and it was sort of his brainchild, I want to get some feedback from him before, you know, we discuss this a little bit more, because I really want to know what I'm talking about. I want to, I want to find out from him, you know, his particular vision. I don't know if he's contacted any of the rest of you. If he hasn't, you probably ought to contact him. I think that since, you know, he was the guy that started, and I think we could all benefit by those individual conversations.
Just to jump in here, Laura and I, because we're on that subcommittee, we actually met with the, not the entire board, but the sort of core executive board of the proposed foundation. We had about an hour and a half-long meeting the other week, which I thought was good. There were a lot of good questions that came up and discussion. Laura, I guess the question I would ask you is, actually, let me start with Jeff. Jeff, as I recall, this item for the community foundation is scheduled to come back to the council in May. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So Laura, are you asking, are you asking for a discussion to take place before this comes back to the council or at that meeting or what?
I'd like it to be, I'd like it to happen in advance of that scheduled meeting. I mean, similar to, for example, the other night, we had a conversation about abandonment of land, where we were going to discuss the policy and then take an action. Right? It ended up working out where we discussed the policy first, which I think is the appropriate way to approach it, and then dovetail into the conversation about a specific ask. So that's what I'm, I'm looking to just kind of tighten up the process a little bit, because I'm getting a lot of feedback from community members who, you know, and it's just hard without having a clear picture and vision of kind of what this is about and why we're asking.
I understand, I understand what they're, at least I understand the timing of the request now. I mean, you and I were both in that same meeting and not putting words in anybody's mouths. I, we probably had a somewhat different perspective of where things stood with the proposed community foundation. Meaning, I understand you were, you know, you were raising similar questions and concerns there. So I guess the question is up to the DIAS. Do we want to agendize a discussion of the background and plan that before we, of what, putting, allocating, revisit the issue of allocating the PG&E money to this, or the scope of what we want the community foundation to look like? What is it that we're working for?
I think the discussion would be around what would be the intent of a community foundation, what would we hope to get out of it?
Okay. That's very clear.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. We're coming up on 11 o'clock. Are we going to be done in a minute, or do you need a motion to extend it for five?
Let's extend it for five.
All right, so moved.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? No, good. Thank you, Ron. All right, so Laura's explained what it is that she's looking for. What's the reaction?
I guess I'm just not clear with the intent of the already scheduled May meeting is. This is where I'm getting confused on that. And is this something that we could get sort of written comment on what the foundation is?
In the interest of being time-sensitive here, I believe what the difference is, is what is currently planned to come back to the council is a proposal by the nascent community foundation for how they would like to be organized, what they plan on doing with the money, what their plans are for being a community foundation. And Laura is raising a different question, which is, which is, before you get to that point, it's like, well, what's the, let's revisit the question of the intent of creating the foundation. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I think that's what I heard you say. Okay. So that's the difference between the two. One is the foundation coming back saying, hey, here's what we'd like to do. What do you guys think? And, you know, we say yes or no ultimately about whether we want to give them the money and what strings of any are attached to it. Laura's asking a question that would occur before that if the council wants to revisit it.
Couldn't that just be part of the presentation that we get? Couldn't it just be a background and have it be incorporated into that already scheduled meeting?
Well, I guess, I guess my point of view on this is that there's three new council people, and the, and it's a significant, you know, sum of money, right? And I just think it would be worthwhile to have a policy discussion around that outside of a community group coming forward to propose their approach. Right? So to set, you know, criteria for what is it that we're looking for. I mean, any other type of contract, there would be an RFP that would go out to the broader community, and community groups would, you know, or businesses would come forward, right? And submit a proposal to the city. And in this case, you know, that, it didn't really happen that way. So I think there's.
In fairness, I mean, I certainly don't dispute your point that the council has changed since the RFP analog was done, but there was a process like that that led to the process that is coming close to coming back in May. So let me, there's been a proposal to agendize a topic. Remember, we discussed this. Our general rule is that there has to be two people who would like to do that, and so I'm waiting to hear whether there's a second person who wants to do that. Obviously, Laura wants to. So is there anybody else? Okay, we will pass on that. If you want, you know, you're welcome to bring it up again next time. We'll be meeting again before then. I have one other agenda item, potential item. I wanted to see what the council was interested in, but before I do that, does anybody else have stuff? Okay. I met with Michelle Nafac before today's meeting. You know, she's president of the school board. And it occurred to both her and I, after we were talking for a while, that housing's not the only topic of which there might be some value, whether it was a simple meeting like what we traditionally do, or whether it was a town hall kind of meeting, but a joint meeting of the school board and the city council to be held sometime this year. Personally, I've always wanted to have more integration between the two bodies, because we pretty much serve the same constituency. And so my request is whether there's interest in the DIAS to task the two-plus-two committee to see whether, sort of kick the idea around a little bit, see if they can come up with something that makes sense, and bring it back to the two agencies. So I want, that's the idea. I want to see if anybody's interested in tasking the two-plus-two committee with that.
The two-plus-two committee hasn't met yet, so I'd like to, I mean, I'm happy to make that part of our discussion.
Okay.
But I'd like to kind of get my feet wet on that first and, you know, see how the discussions go and what the issues are that we would need to tackle jointly.
Which, in fact, was the purpose of putting, asking the two-plus-two committee to look at it.
Okay.
And if the conclusion is, there's nothing to talk about, then don't do the meeting.
I see. I'm happy to.
As the other two-plus-two member, I think that's fine.
Fine, good. Go for it. Any other reflections in agenda setting? Jeff, anything from staff?
Just very quickly, a reminder for council and the community that we have two wildfire preparedness meetings coming up. The first is this Saturday, April 13th, at Dominico's Winery at 10:00 a.m. The second opportunity will be Tuesday, April 16th, at the Hiller Aviation Museum at 7:00 p.m. RSVPs are being taken for either event. Both are listed on the city's website.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn early.